Close session in council meeting, I'm calling it's ordered, it's now five thirty two. How important do you think?
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Rollins? All present.
General comments or written comments?
I have not received any written comments or any written comments for this portion of the agenda.
Public comment. Tonight we are going to have one closed session item. With respect every. Closed session pursuant government code. The one session item we'll be talking about tonight is the conference with labor negotiators. According to government code. Five four nine five seven point six. The designated representatives of our back Connors. City manager Charles Perez. Deputy city manager Kevin Spalding. And employees association for the employee employees association. At this time I'm going to recess to close session.
Mayor Rollins, you need to ask if there are any conflicts to disclose.
Are there any conflicts to disclose at this time?
Yes, there is. I have a reasonably foreseeable material financial conflict due to spousal income.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention so. Without meaning that council and Congress won't be able to be in the meeting at all which is not.
That is correct. She will not be allowed to be present.
Okay, so are there any other conflicts? At this point I'm going to recess to close sessions. It's now five thirty four.
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Present.
Mayor Rollins?
Here.
All present.
Okay, at this point in time, we're going to have general public comment. The council, first of all, the council will hear closed session public comments. There were no closed session comments, so now we're going to, we're going to have the flag suit, so please stand with me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight's inspiration will be by Councilmember Perez.
All right. I'm just going to read a favorite poem of mine that helps me, and it's kind of coincides with Mental Health Month, which is coming up in May. It says, "Our inner demons all eternal fight that nobody else can see, invisible armor always worn to protect the real me. Hard to focus and never present, our minds can be far too loud. Making it to the end of day, it's hard for us to feel proud. And yet, first of all, we're not alone. Many people feel this way. And to fight a constant mental battle makes you stronger than you say. Time to forgive, allow yourself a break, find someone in whom to confide. For what you're going through, it's normal. There's no need for you to hide. Talking in time are the greatest healers. Your mind should not be your foe. Just know that you can and will get through this. You are loved more than you know."
Thank you. Okay, we had a closed session. Do we have a report of closed session?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Okay, so now we will move on to general public comment. Members of the public may submit comments on the agenda or within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers will be allowed three minutes per agenda item to address city council. Members of the public who want to address the city council should fill out a speaker card, so you still have the ability to do that if you haven't done so yet, which are located in the back of the table, the city council chambers, and provide the city speaker card to the city clerk. Written comments are requested to be received by 5:00 PM and can be submitted to the city clerk on the day of the city council meeting to ensure that they are received by the council. All written public comments would be no more than 500 words. Okay, so at this point, do we have any written comments?
I do have written comments for the general public comment. I have four.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I should have said this early. I have a point of privilege to access my phone during a council meeting. It's a violation of our city council policy and procedures, except in an emergency, and my mom went through surgery today, so I might get an emergency message from family, and that would be the only reason I would be using my phone during council meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so can we move on to the written comments first?
City council members and others present. As a Port Wayne Eme Little League alum, this league was a crucial part of making me who I am today. I wasn't in a gang because I had practice to go to get to. I wasn't arrested because I had a big game the next morning. I have friends that I've had since minor leagues at the park. I've watched now major league baseball players start here at Port Wayne Eme Little League, like my cousin Paul McNulty, all while dreaming I may have a chance to hit Monday play at Williamsport in the Little League World Series. My parents gave countless hours to improve the park and spend the time to work on fields and shop for the then-run-down snack bar, making repairs out of their own pocket because it's somewhere I love to be with them. I even worked the snack bar when my team wasn't playing because it helped me learn a business skill I would later use in life of showing up on time, working my shifts, and then helping maintain the facility by cleaning and ensuring it was always properly secured. The lessons I learned from the fields of the Port Wayne Eme Little League helped me be successful as a United States Marine, serving my country overseas in conflict, but also having the opportunity to teach young children in Afghanistan and Iraq America's pastime of baseball. Teaching them it's not about win or lose, but the memories you make with your friends, no matter what color, religion they practice, and even what gender you are, as long as you smile, hit that base with your foot and come up to bat, knowing you can be the next Ken Griffey, Hank Aaron, or Sam Khalifa, only Muslim MLB players to date of the Pittsburgh Pirates. Our children should be invested in, and that starts at Port Wayne Eme Little League and Bubbling Springs Park. The snack bar provides nourishment for those days mom and dad can't make it home to cook a meal, or the entire Saturday at the park watching my cousins and other family members play, and are thankful that I have a good place to get food that isn't all junk. Each year, we watch neighboring cities invest in their parks while Port Wayne Eme does very little to keep this tradition of America's pastime park working. This snack bar should be opened, and it should be added to upcoming budgets to upgrade the snack bar, if not work to build a modern facility. We beg of you, please do the right thing and open the doors to the snack bar once more and give the city's youth a great place to be a kid. Philip Stevenson, Jr., Port Wayne Eme Little League alum.
Thank you, Philip. Do we have any more?
We do. I have four.
Oh, great.
Port Wayne Eme city officials. Hard to understand why the city is not stepping up to help the Little League in the city resolve. Whatever issues are keeping the snack bar closed and inhibiting them from generating needed revenue to keep the league in business. The city benefits from children engaged in sports instead of idle on the streets. Come on, this does not appear to be a difficult fix. Margarita Bruther, Port Wayne Eme resident. Greetings, Port Wayne Eme City Council. I am writing on behalf of my sons, Quentin, age eight, and Preston, age six. Both are players for Port Wayne Eme Little League. We are writing to request that you pay more attention to Bubbling Springs Park and Port Wayne Eme Little League in the form of allocating more funds for improvements. Bubbling Springs is the largest park and greenway in Port Wayne Eme and deserves to be properly maintained. I have seen many players trip over mole holes in uneven grass on the fields. I have seen players and parents cleaning trash from the unemptied trashcans. Many games have to be rescheduled because it gets too dark to play. Bubbling Springs is infested with mosquitoes. Please invest in Bubbling Springs Park and Port Wayne Eme Little League. There is no better way to invest in our city than in our city's youth. Thank you, Mariah Bentley, a registered voter.
Hello, city council members and staff. My name is Jacob Marquez Pandoja. I am very disappointed to see that many more non-native eucalyptus trees were just planted near Richard Bard, Bubbling Springs Park, near the Port City Plaza and the Ray D. Pewter Library. Besides being non-native, eucalyptus trees are known for a decline in groundwater level, and as a result, they are certainly not very drought tolerant and in fact use up large amounts of water, especially once mature. This is especially bad since the trees were planted near Bubbling Springs Creek, a wetland that requires fresh water to keep flowing. This mismanaged planting not only costs us money immediately with buying the trees, but also future costs and headaches such as eventual limb removal due to the species' hazardous nature. The bark of this species has actually involved in its original home of Australia to contain highly flammable oils which are known to pose fire risks as well. It has been said again and again about the
It has been said again and again about the need to plant trees that are at the very least drought tolerant, but at the moment, our city is actually making things worse. Please, city council and staff, tell and demand whoever is in charge of this planting to do the right thing and think before they act. I believe this is Tony Stewart from Community Development. Another topic that continues to be an issue is the inaction of the movement of the community garden. It has been months and there is still no progress. It is not very complex to simply allow for it to be moved, and in fact, the city won't need to move it themselves, but rather the community and perhaps volunteers will do that. As city manager, please help and do your part, Brad Connors. Something must be done or else the spring and summer's growing season will be gone before anything can, has even been planted. Please, city council members and staff, encourage and help these people to act. All of you can help make a logical and sound change for our environment and our community's health. It is not enough to simply read out an Earth Day proclamation and think, think, think things are just going to get better on their own. We all need to work together and push those around us for changes that will, that will lead to things actually getting things done and soon. Lastly, forgive me for not telling you this in person. As a member of our city's youth, I have to help our collective future in other ways at this time. Those are all the written comments. I do have some general comments that you could...
Okay, so these are the people who want to make general comments, not on the agenda tonight. This would be just general comments that you might want to bring in. You'll have three minutes to make your presentation. And the first person that I have on the list is John Brennan.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you. I'm here just to reiterate, to vote yes, to install speed bumps in Volker. It's just been so crazy there, people just speeding by. And we must do our part to prevent possible, preventable collisions, so. Just people drive too fast, so it's better to inconvenience them than for someone to lose their life, so.
Thank you. We next have Cynthia Ross.
Okay, I'm not very good at public speaking, so bear with me. First of all, I want to thank the city council and the mayors, past and, past and present, and also city planners, everybody who works for the city and the police department. I just found out that, about this vote today, so I'm very unprepared. But I came here representing my neighborhood. I have over 130 signatures. It's unanimous. Like, I, people grabbed this out of my hand to sign it. There was no, there was no hesitation at all. So I can leave these with you, but basically, I am very glad that this is coming up for a vote. And I really, really beg you to vote yes because our neighborhood needs us. We will have a nice neighborhood. Right now, we have people racing down our streets. It's hard to do a fair assessment because it's not like everybody is speeding. It's, it's sporadic. Cars come zooming down our street. The stop signs are fabulous, but people are rolling right through them. So we need something put on our streets to get people to stop using our street as a shortcut over to Hemlock. And also, just if, whether they're in the neighborhood or not, they should not be speeding. So I'm begging you to please vote yes. We really need this. Our neighborhood will blossom with speed bumps. I promise. Thank you, and if you would like these...
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate with everybody, we can't make a comment on public comments. We're all listening very closely, but we can't make an actual comment at this time. So at this point in time, I have Grandma Beverly.
Is it okay if I approach and go real quick with a picture? Real quick, bud?
Can you take it from there? Oh, you want to show us, you want to show us the picture?
Yeah, this is my grandson. Name's Zachary Michael. This was a little bit before he got hit with a gun. About two and a half hours ago. He really wasn't speeding, but rolled a stop. So when John says people's lives are at stake, they are. If all the people are just getting injured, well, yes, that's great, right? That's what we need to stop paying. It's not. The amount of people that are injured and the taxpayers paying for it is astronomical because of distracted driving. I'm not a resident of Port Wayne. I'm a resident of Ventura County. And I was a truck driver, so I've seen all kinds of bad behavior on the road. And unfortunately, I've lived the worst nightmare for a single year. He would have been 19 this year. But he doesn't get to be anything this year. When these folks are asking for the simplest of things, there's a reason for it. At 20 miles an hour, only one person will die out of 10 that gets struck. At 40 miles an hour, that goes to nine people out of 10 will die from getting struck. And we all have the habit, I'm sure if we all be honest, we all go a little over that speed limit every time. 80 on I-5, 10 miles over here, 5 miles over there, 30 down the residential zone. And we think, it might not, it didn't happen to me. Long received intent or the doing it of killing somebody because you're negligent or because your infrastructure's in that stuff. Been doing this a long time, so let me just end with the three E's of road safety or engineering, which there's a lot of nightmares here in Volker and around this neighborhood that could be fixed. Enforcement, if there's no consequences for your actions, people are just going to keep speeding. And education. I hope I've educated you guys today that this could happen to any one of you here. Pick one of your grandchildren or somebody you love desperately and imagine you get a call with it because of some negligent driving, some bad road structure, or just something happens. Oh, hi. Sorry, we have people saying, this mayor and this mayor came to our event for World Evangelism and I would like to put a proposal that we put Ventura Road and Port Wayne Little League, South Red Road, 10 miles, to a 32 mile an hour speed limit. So then people will go maybe five or 10 over that, but it'll slow down the traffic there. It's very hard to get across those corridors. It's too fast. People are coming just too fast, okay? So, you know, infrastructure needs to be looked at. Enforcement needs to be looked at. Education, I'd love to get behind little drivers trading back at school, but that's a big ask. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, council members. We want to introduce ourselves this evening as we're the negotiation team that's been selected to represent the SEIU General Unit membership. We are your frontline workers who on a day-to-day basis keep this city running. We are your staff members in the following departments. Water, wastewater, refuse, facilities maintenance, housing, finance, community services, landscape, streets, and fleet maintenance. When you make decisions on the directions the city goes in up there on the dais, we're the people that execute those orders. We want to offer faces you can put names to, so when you're in closed session discussing the class and compensation studies and the negotiation proposals for our members, you'll know who some of us are. Our desire is to be a city that people want to seek a career. We want to attract and retain quality staff members to continue providing our residents with the best services possible. We do not want to continue to be a training grounds for people we train that just move on. The time spent doing this takes longer to complete the tasks and it's inefficient. We are always training and we can't, if we're, if we're always training, we can't be a well-oiled machine. Currently, we do not attract adequate experienced people applying for our job opportunities. Maybe it's because they're not competitive enough. We know that you want to create our city as a beautiful destination point, a place people want to come to. We want to help you see that vision come to fruition, but to be the best, we need the best. In, in order to have a beautiful plant, tree, or garden, you need a healthy root system. We're that root system. You may not see the roots below the surface, but they're extremely important in order to have flourishing. Your strategic plan, the tenure vision, mentions optimal levels of service for residents and business. It also mentions, and I quote, "We aspire to be an employees of, an employer of choice." In Appendix Human Resources, it talks about talent acquisition, building a higher functioning workforce, and attracting and retaining key talent. Help us in our efforts to build quality staff the city can be proud to depend on to get things done. We want our longevity and our professionalism to transcend into the next generation of employees who come after us. I'm Brian Flamenco, 27 years of service, lead in wastewater, and a 27-year-old resident in Port Wayne.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jessica Cerda, 11 years of service, and I'm a 10-year resident of Port Wayne.
Good evening. I'm Blanca Smith, currently almost seven years with the city and working with the Housing and Facilities Maintenance Department, and I am a resident of Port Wayne Little League for 11 years.
My name is Roger Ringel. I've been working for the city for 12 years now, and I'm a member of the Water Department. I'm a water utility operator.
I'm Rick Sorbontis. I'm with the Salt Waste Division. I've been here for 18 years now.
Real briefly, as you can see, there's a theme here. There's a significant number of us current employees that have also chosen this wonderful city as our residence, including you guys as well. I can think of 13 offhand. I, I just bring that to you, to your attention because I think it's worth pointing out. It's pretty unique and it's pretty special for the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now have Anna Bolo.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and guests. I would like to first and foremost thank all of you guys for the support you've shown to our organization. This past Friday, I met with David Casterson of Lauter Park and Associates to review the requirements needed for our snack bar. It's going to be really, really tight, to say the least, but I'm, I'm in high hopes that we could get that, the requirements completed, or at least get us, you know, close to it. On Wednesday, I was able to meet with Charles Perez and Anna Hanyi to review the lease and discuss some of the items that the Little League needs, just operational items. All of the, I, I've spoken to Montavo Little League, Foothill Little League, Ventura Coastal, Eastside, or Colonial Little League, and Sunset Little League over at Hill Street. I unfortunately discovered that we're the only Little League that has to pay a fee for our fields. The only one. We help out Sunset Little League over at Hill Street because they don't have enough teams to even form a division. They come to our park and we send our kids over there. This has happened since 2018. The city's 75th birthday is coming up next year. You guys are working on a master plan for the parks. Our Little League is going to be 65 years old in two years. At this time, I would like to request the city council, city manager, to please consider grandfathering in the Little League to Bubbling Springs Park where we don't have to pay a fee to have our kids play at the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments that you'd like? This is your last chance. Okay, so now we will move on to the agenda for the night. Our first, I'd like to get an approval for the city council agenda.
So move?
Second?
Vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, our first presentation tonight will be given by Mark Bialer from the Beacon.
Mayor, members of the city council, members of the audience, and members of Ventura County and city of Port Wayne. My name is Mark Bialer, and I'm the executive director of Beacon. Beacon is the erosion, the beach erosion authority for clean oceans and nourishment. And I'm going to present a short PowerPoint slide presentation to you all on recent activities and accomplishments of Beacon and what Beacon does with your support and in participation and partnership with the city. As you know, up until three years ago, Brian Brennan, who's been before you several times, was the unpaid executive director of Beacon, supported by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. Two and a half years ago, I was selected to assist Brian and then two years ago, selected to be the executive director. I'm very proud to represent Beacon tonight and want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you today the partnership activities between Beacon and the city. What's the role of Beacon? Why is Beacon vital? Why was Beacon created in 1986 by John Flynn, Ventura County Supervisor, and by Naomi Schwartz, Ventura, Santa Barbara County Supervisor? Because now the scientists have developed sufficient information to tell us that unless we do management actions beyond what we're doing now, we risk the loss of between one-third and two-thirds of our region's sandy beaches. This is a topic that has been in Beacon's wheelhouse for some time now, and we've developed some good science and some good science advisors. And in the current threats of climate and weather, Beacon has become even more important as a partner to Point Wayne, which I hope to demonstrate tonight in the short presentation. So let me just say that we're going to, I'm talking about four things tonight. Who Beacon is, what we do, how we actually act, and then why it matters that you and your seven partner local jurisdictions created Beacon in 1986. It's important to note that you are Beacon. Beacon represents the coastline from the border of San Luis Obispo County to the border of Los Angeles County and the entire Ventura County coastline. Beacon is eight member agencies, Santa Barbara County, Ventura County, and the cities of Port Wayne, Oxnard, Ventura, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, and Goleta. And the map before you, I think, demonstrates why was Beacon created in the context of beach erosion, sediment, and ocean processes? Because look at the geography of the cities. They by themselves cannot address regional processes. And look at the counties. Ventura's beaches are created by Santa Barbara sediment. And Los Angeles beaches are actually contributed to by Ventura's sediment. And so these are regionally significant projects that demand regional action. And it was a foresight that in 1986, and I mean this in the best sense, a rather conservative supervisor from Ventura County, John Flynn, and a rather liberal supervisor from Santa Barbara County, Naomi Schwartz, came together with a vision to establish a regional program to develop beach erosion projects. The Beacon Board, who is it? It's two supervisors and one representative from all six jurisdictions. Right now, Councilmember Gama serves as the Beacon representative from Point Wayne and Councilmember Hernandez is the alternate to Beacon. All jurisdictions have members and then they also have alternates. In the last year and a half, we've created an executive committee to actually, because Beacon doesn't meet every month or every two weeks like councils do or sports and supervisors, we meet every other month. We meet every other month. And so we created an executive committee to make sure we get momentum. So five of the 10 members sit as an executive for a term of two years, chair vice chair, and representatives from three of the cities. And that'll become a rotating assignment to Beacon Board members. In addition, in the last two years, we created a science advisory committee. Why have we done that? Because the threats from climate and weather and natural processes are so strong that we need the best scientific basis we can have for our decision-making. And so we're trying to utilize the best available science and actually move the needle a little bit. We've assembled a group of 12 academics primarily, but two professionally practicing professional engineers. I think four of them come from the Beacon region, and the rest come from other coastal California regions. And they represent some of the best and brightest talent to advise you and the Beacon Board on the best policy. What do we do? I've already mentioned this a little bit, but we attempt to link science to policy and develop the best resilient programs we can in projects. And Beacon's been an innovator, and the representatives from the City of Point Juanini have supported Beacon in its innovative approach to projects that address coastal resources. So for example, you see a picture of Surfers Point, which happens to be in a different jurisdiction, but attracts a lot of residents from the county. And that project, which is a now, I want to say 25-year-old project, has successfully demonstrated that Beacon's approach to coastal restoration actually is a very advanced and far-reaching. So in 2015 and 2016, Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties suffered El Nino storms. The Surfers Point project, which is now a enhanced dune with some cobble defense, survived and performed as expected, protected the Ventura County fairgrounds. And the part that was not improved in the first phase suffered significant damage. And if you go to the Ventura County Fairground Promenade there in Ventura City, you'll see the bike path in the part that we haven't finished is falling into the ocean. The part that we moved back out of the hazard zone is actually going to be protected, we estimate, for the next 50 years. What do we do in terms of comprehensive restoration projects? And there was some interest for me to describe projects that address Point Juanini priorities, so I'll do that. But as you can see from this list, we're active across the entire Beacon coast. Goleta Beach, Goleta Bay, that's a natural resource project focused on kelp restoration. Carpinteria Beach, Surfers Point in Ventura. Mondo's Cove, which is one of the most popular beaches in your town of Ventura County, now hosts a half dozen surfing schools and actually provides one of the most important water safety and water skill locations in the entire county. It attracts about 400,000 county residents and non-county residents to actually learn how to safely participate in ocean water sports. And then Juanini Beach Restoration, which I'll talk about later in what partnership practices we actually are engaged in. How we do our project, we're a partnership organization. We're not a land use regulator. We're a volunteeristic organization. The eight jurisdictions voluntarily agreed to merge together in a joint powers authority, which is what Beacon is, to do joint actions. We have to maintain unanimity among our board members, and we can only go as far as the board members want the agency to go. We spend a lot of time providing science and policy information to our board in order that we can inform our policy with the best science and the best practices. In addition, we seek to take the small resources and reserves that Beacon has. We're basically a member due-supported organization, and leverage those funds. We have an average budget of about $300,000 a year that you support. In the last two and a half years, we've raised about $1 million to leverage those funds for planning, staff support, and project development. Why does it matter? I've already mentioned why it matters, and I don't have to tell you why it matters. The actions of Beacon and the city and the county of Ventura have produced a resilient, solid sandy beach as an anchor in your community, but only so long as we manage it every single year and every other year. Mobilize between $15 and $20 million to deposit the dredge materials from the harbor onto the beach. We have to continue to actively manage these resources, or we're going to lose them. And this is not for me. This is from the scientists that you have hired at California Universities to produce the best information. And really, the message I wanted to leave tonight is the Beacon coast belongs to all the agencies. And one of the strengths of Beacon is City Council member talks to his other city council member. The councilwoman talks to another council member. They actually exchange really vital information, and perhaps practices and best lessons can be learned from that exchange. Beacon's impact, I don't have to tell you how important the beaches are to the economy of both counties and all the cities. Something close to $17 billion in tourism on a regional level is dedicated to beach tourism. And in the state, and I think it's true here in the county, as many people visit our sandy beaches as visit any of the amusement parks that may be, any of the paid amusement attractions, and almost as much as the shopping malls combined in the county. Very important, powerful economic force. I'd like to go through a couple of projects that address Point Juanini interests and Port Juanini priorities and local regional priorities. One of Beacon's missions is coastal water quality, protecting coastal water quality. Working with staff and representatives here at the city and staff at the City of Oxnard and at the Ventura County Watershed Department, you should all know that there are plans to improve trash and polluted runoff and stormwater pollution that have not been fully implemented. One of those is, are the debris capture facilities, still called booms, that are in plans but not implemented. We've been working with Ventura County to get the funding, maybe through a legislative request, to actually install these. As you know, weekly and monthly, there's citizen efforts to clean debris and trash from Oxnard to Goleta. They do it every single week, and it's almost the same amount every single time they go out. We need a more integrated system. Trash capture boom devices work very, very well, and they would augment the citizen efforts to clean and protect our coastal water quality. I'd like to talk just a minute about Juanini Beach Nourishment. And if I'm going over my allotted time tonight, please let me know. For the past three years, we've participated in helping lead the establishment of what's called a sand summit. In these years, we have redoubled our efforts to work with the city to actually mobilize the partners to get sufficient dollar funds to support the sufficient sand amounts and volumes that we need to put on the beach every year. These efforts have borne fruit. We're now in the planning process of our third sand summit. But it appears that we've increased, not Beacon by itself, but in partnership with the city and regional forces, the amount of money that will come to support the dredging cycle in the next cycle, and that we'll get over 2 million cubic yards, or something over a million per year. The goal is 1.2, so that's 2.4 million cubic yards, again, based on scientists' estimation. But we're moving in the right direction to have a regional approach to this project to ensure that the Juanini Beach remains as a sustainable community resource. Finally, I just want to mention something that addresses all jurisdictions that are part of Beacon. That's our coastal regional sediment management plan. We are updating this plan, and it's important to the area here because in the South Ventura context, the threats to your sandy beaches are increasing. We just know that. We've worked with the Navy. We've worked with your partner port organizations. And we hope out of the sand summit to actually get some more policy directing to this subarea, which generally goes from the Port of Juanini to the Magoo Rock, with some additional planning resources to figure out how best can we capture the sand, move it to the right place, and retain it as a resource. And some of this has to do with, I'll just mention this, natural resource protection. So one of the things that you have as an upside, even though in the community it may be considered kind of a mixed blessing, is you have already a natural dune system of some extent in the community. In Ventura, we're developing additional dune system protection as well as carpentry in Santa Barbara. We think we should be bringing some regional examples and then discuss what's appropriate for this part of the region as a special area because every place is different. So we will be redoubling our efforts within our large regional planning for these subareas, including this subarea specifically. As I mentioned, we have to leverage our resources because even though we ask you to give us a lot of money every year in dues, it's not sufficient to do the program work that we're doing now with the scientists that we're working with. So I just wanted to mention, I mentioned it earlier. We've been very successful. We raised $300,000, $400,000 a year. We just raised another $350,000 this year, not included in this slide, in fact. So we're trying to grow our resources external and match what the internal member dues situation is. I really appreciate the opportunity to present this. I'm sorry, I kind of speak fast and it's a lot of information to absorb in one setting, but I wanted to give you a brief overview. And I'm actually here on behalf of the Chair of the Beacon Board. That's Greg Hart, the Santa Barbara County Supervisor and the current Chair of the Beacon Board. And unfortunately, because of the conflict, he couldn't be to present here tonight. But I love the opportunity to present to you, happy to answer any questions you may have, and excited to continue the partnership with the City of Port Juanini. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, the beach is a big priority in our city. At this point in time, I'm going to entertain some questions from our council.
Just have a quick comment. Thank you so much for coming out, Mr. Baylor. Really appreciate your expertise. And I hearken back to the very first Beacon meeting that I attended, and that's when I learned that every mountain wants to become a beach. And I like to say that a lot because it kind of rings true to me. Our unique situation here in the City of Port Juanini is dependent upon getting that sand delivered to us timely, efficiently, within the constraints of air pollution credits. And it's a lot more involved than what people really understand. And really appreciate the fact that over the last three years, we've come together and we've worked hard, and we've written letters, and we identify the problems that we know, and we've got an increase in funding. And I think the future is going to be sandy around here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baylor, for being here tonight. I really appreciate the efforts of Beacon and the work that you've done and your assistance with the sand summit, and look forward to working with you with our, this will be our third one, right, coming up? I do have a question about the Mandalay Bay Power Plant, which I heard has been sold. And I expect that that's going to be turned over and become a development area. What is the potential for impact of a development, housing development, in that location, and how might that impact our replenishment efforts here in Juanini?
Well, you're asking me a question that's really kind of outside of my expertise. I'm not so familiar, although I'm aware of the Ormond Beach planning process.
This is Mandalay Beach, which is near Oxnard shores.
Excuse me. I'm not sure, to be honest with you, of what impact it would have, nor what the land use nor planning approval process will be. It'll be complicated, and it'll probably be community-driven. You're a very strong community politically and outspoken. And I presume that will get to whoever developed it or bought it. But I think that's going to be, that's a long game question.
Yeah.
How will that process, that project actually affect the coast? That'll be analyzed through environmental documents, and I don't want to speculate. It's way above my pay grade in that sense.
All right. Sorry to hit you with that. Thanks.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I took a class, an oceanography class, a couple of years ago at Oxnard College, and I was aware of the fact that we didn't always have to replenish our beach. And my professor told me that it was because during World War II, they wanted to use the port, and they had to open it up. And then that didn't allow for sand to come over here to our beach from the other beach. So could you tell us who's responsible for paying for the dredging to replenish our beach?
So as you described, and I'm just going to, I'll be brief, it's a very complicated, longer story. So when the Navy came to own the port, they came with the obligation of what impact did the port development have on the beach? And what they concluded was, in fact, about 2.4 million cubic yards of sand every other year was what was lost by virtue of the production and development of Port Juanini. In that context, because that was done in the '40s, not until the '60s was a solution at hand. And that's when Channel Islands Harbor was developed. Because with Channel Islands Harbor, we developed a sand trap, so-called sand trap. So we collect the sand, and then every couple of years, we have to excavate that sand out of the trap as it fills up. And that is the source of the sand. The obligation to pay for it is the federal government's for this particular activity. And it's split 81% Corps of Engineers Federal Government and 19% US Navy. And every time, every year, in appropriations, we have to go to Corps of Engineers and the Navy, and everybody has to sign off on the amount of money that's going to be delivered. Historically, correct me if I'm wrong, up to 14 million was federally legislatively appropriated. What's happened with the 14 million over time is inflation. So 14 million used to buy something close to the full sand allotment. Now it buys something less. So it's not about the money per se, it's about the cubic yards and the amount of volume, when it's dropped, how it's dropped, all these particulars. So this is a federal obligation. But unless the community, and I think this is where the sand summit comes from, unless the community expresses what is needed to the congressional representatives, they don't really know. They're not informed about what to ask. So the sand summit, we have the representative Brownlee staff there. We give them as much information as we can. We coordinate with conference calls in order to educate them. And we have, over time, been successful. Now, it appears we have been granted $2 million in the dredging cycle, which we think gets us closer to the goal, which has resulted from this lobbying of the collective group. So sorry to have a long answer, but it's a federal responsibility. We're holding their feet to the fire as much as we can.
That's a really good answer. And how much does it normally cost to do the dredging every other year?
Well, it's been caught, we, it's been about $14 million because that's the budget we had. So that's produced something about, something less than $2 million cubic yards. As you know, however, so this is an amazing experience for me. This is my first public meeting since March of 2020, in a suit, in front of anybody. But what I found in COVID is inflation, inflation in everything. And now we're seeing what the inflation is. We are trying to make sure that the amount we have isn't exceeded by the inflationary cost factor, so we're back to where we were before. But this is a concern. So when we have the sand summit and we talk about this, we'll talk to the Congress member about, well, maybe 16 isn't the right figure. So either go back, or the next time, let's get it right, in order to educate ourselves about. Because the real world, it's when you buy it, it's how expensive. And the other arcane thing, and this is not a pejorative, but there's only a limited dredging capacity on the West Coast. Ventura County is a very important dredging location. Channel Islands, Ventura Harbor, Santa Barbara. But the dredgers don't live here. They live in Seattle and Portland. And the mobilization of those private sector resources is very expensive. And so when they come, they have to coordinate. And that's some of the discussion we've had previously about why every other year as opposed to every year? How do you mobilize all these resources and get them in place at the right time?
Thank you. A couple of years ago, I remember there was an issue in that we had equipment that was being brought in by the federal government to bring the sand back in, but then the equipment broke down. Nonetheless, we were charged for it, and we weren't able to put enough sand in the beaches that we had planned to do. Do you know much about that?
I know that happened, and I know it does happen, and you're not the only project where that has created problems. The City of Oceanside has a sand bypass system that chronically and regularly cannot produce the sand that's needed, and chronically and regularly breaks down. We need to invest in new, modern technology. One of the topics Beacon has tried to talk to is, these are diesel-powered activities. You can't get a more polluting source of fuel, actually. And so we're talking about, are there alternatives? Even the dredgers are talking about the big companies like Matson. Should we go electric? What does electric mean? What's the cost factor? So I think you're going to see a next generation. These dredges are, in many cases, 20, 30 years old. They've been, you know, rehabbed, they've been modernized, but they're not designed, right, today, they're designed for a different period of time. And it is an economic question. Unless the dredgers can get the business to produce sufficient revenue to invest in the next generation, we're going to be stuck in this cycle. And this is an issue, though. We talked about it on the phone this morning. We're talking about it at the sand summit. We'll get some brains on this topic. Because this isn't the only place that we need a different fuel source or a different power source. Because as I said, there's three harbors. It's all happening in all the different harbors. And it's not just exclusive of Ventura County either.
You mentioned one term, the dune, the dune system. What is that?
Well, you know what it is. It's an integrated beach and dune environment. But what the dunes do really is they're a storm deflection resource. They deflect the waves, and the storm surge that comes in, they knock it down. They give the coast a chance to actually absorb all that energy. So dunes, as we found, and Ventura is one of our projects where we've written this up, it actually provides a very effective defense against flooding and extreme storm events. And so we're looking at dunes as a tactic and strategy to use as we develop resilient shoreline projects along the coast.
Right now, we have something that some always call the scar on the beach, on Juanini Beach. Do you know with the next dredging, if that's going to get rid of the scar? You know, basically. You know, basically fill it up and flatten it out so that that doesn't happen because it doesn't look so appealing, you know, fills it with water?
Well, you call it the scar, some people call it the lake, you know, has different names. I think this will be a topic for ongoing conversation with the dredger company that does it and the federal authorities that issue the money to manage it. Because it's come up before, how you place it, where it places it. It is important. And we want to mobilize it as close to the shoreline, however, so that the system can transfer it across time and space, not always lay it right on top of the beach, all in a big lumps kind of sum, and then have it move more slowly. So, but this, as issues come up, we know it's a concern, and we were listening, and I think we'll have a dialogue about this.
So you're saying the reason we have a scar is because of the placement of the, the sand that gets added onto the beach?
Generally, how it's placed would affect whether there would be a, basically a lake or a scar, and how fast it'll fill up or not. It's a complicated topic because it's, it's a natural system of water and ocean currents. And so it's a topic that's been raised several times. I think we're going to have a conversation about how could we imagine a different placement technique or, or volumetric assessment in order to not have this recur again?
Thank you.
Want to chime in a bit, and my opinion may not be worth much. But I think that it's an accumulation of the deficit of not mimicking Mother Nature over the last several years. I think we've determined there's like a $30 million, a 30 million cubic yard deficit of sand. In other words, we're trying to mimic Mother Nature by cutting off the flow of sand, and that's where that budget thing comes in. For those of us that have been around here for a very long time, we were used to a nice, flat beach out there. And then that all changed in 2013. And I don't think we've ever fully recovered yet. And so maybe some might disagree, but I think that's.
That, that may well be. I think the way I look at that metric is it's 60 years of operation and 30 million cubic yards of deficit. Do the math. That's 500,000 cubic yards deficit annually. That's just about the deficit we've documented in the dredging cycles. So I don't see it as a $30 million deficit. I see it as a regular 500,000 cubic yard deficit. Because we're doing two, we want to do 2.4 to 2.5. That's, I think, how we get back to that condition you had pre-2013. But that's just my opinion, too. I'm not the scientist. It is the same objective, same outcome, same goal, just stated a little bit.
Right. And real quickly, just for the public, if you think of a river running dry, it runs dry at the end. And the end of our sand river is Point Magoo, and Point Magoo is experiencing significant infrastructure problems. And so it all kind of ties together, and it's really cool with the Sand Summit because we heard from the experts at the Navy, their, their data and their information was mirroring what you've taught us over the last three years. So seems like we're all coming together, understanding the problem together. Really appreciate.
Councilperson Parretts had a comment. Then you can go.
So yeah, maybe this is my ignorance of this whole situation, and this is actually the first time I've ever really listened and heard the details. But why, if this was done by other entities, specifically federal government, why are we the ones having to struggle to come up with the funding and, and the issue of getting the sand to us? Why is this such a point of issue?
Well, I think that's a conversation we should have outside the council member over coffee. Because as you know, you are the federal government. I know, I know, we think of these institutions as the other. This is a local congressional representative who lives in your county. She is you. And so the reason we lobby them is to educate them about what the local need is. Because unless we come back regularly and have this conversation, we lose that institutional memory about whose responsibility is it? And this question about who's, it's a big, important question. So we need to keep this in front of the federal representatives. Because over time, and this is my opinion, there's a level of inertia and not spoken for versus squeaky wheel. If you, and this is just life, and you know this, if you're not making your advocacy known, if you're not coming and asking for services from your government, whatever it is, government doesn't always know what, what it is that you need. And yet we are the government. So, okay, it took a long time for the government to assume responsibility for what they caused, taking a long time for the community, and a continuing responsibility for the rest of time to make sure the federal government honors its responsibility. And I heard tonight, one important topic. It's not just about policy, it's about enforcing the policy. If the responsibility is federal, then local government should actually enforce that responsibility back on to the federal government. And the last thing I'll say is, federal government is so big, there's so many demands on it, that projects keep lost. You know, and the last thing I'll say is just about what we know about our own community. People don't know that the sand trap at Channel Islands Harbor was built to get sand to Wainimi Beach as a mitigation for a federal installation. What, what they do know, or what they assume is that, well, Channel Islands Harbor is a pleasure craft. Why are we paying for sand to another recreational beach of another community? That's not our job. Well, it is your job. We have to remind you of it. So that's kind of a political answer, I'm sorry, but that is a practical answer. If you don't write letters, if we don't write letters, if we don't go and lobby, we're going to be left at the bus stop, not on the bus. That's just my view of it.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that I learned about Beacon from a former councilman and mayor, John Sharkey, who was a huge proponent of Beacon and understood the sand erosion problem. And so I was really happy when I came on board that, you know, when we were enlightened about this situation we had with our beaches, that we formed this summit. Because alone, we, we didn't have the power to influence or advocate on our behalf alone. But together, we are stronger. We have not only Beacon, but we have the other agencies. And I think that's gone a long ways in helping us ensure we get the funding that we need. So thank you, Beacon, for being on board and, and helping us and, and making us stronger.
You're welcome. And I didn't mean not to answer your question. I think you raised a political question.
I, I raise a difficult question that nobody wants to deal with, but.
Just one more thing. When you talk about dunes, when you look at Mandalay and the removal of Mandalay Power Station, but if you look at those dunes over there, they're 50 feet tall. There's massive dunes. There is so much sand that comes out of the Santa Clara River. And it just kind of, if you take a look, just take a look at it and realize, that's a sand dune that was built by sand moving south, and the wind pushed it up. And then when you get to Oxnard Shores, you realize people want to live on the beach, and there's no sand dunes, you know? And so these are the things that we, into the future, have to really, you know, wonder about and think about. So thank you.
Well, thank you for providing an excellent presentation, and then also spending the time to answer all our questions tonight. And thank you to both councilmen, to being involved in Beacon, to push forward like the need for, what we all are proud of our beaches and stuff. And so, thank you again.
Thank you for your partnership.
And we will have coffee with you. Okay, now we will move on to a presentation by Chief Salinas on Autism Awareness Proclamation.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, city staff, as many of you know, the month of April is Autism Awareness Month. Mayor, you have before you a proclamation that I wrote and that I can recite here up here from the podium. Whereas April is designated as Autism Awareness Month, and whereas autism, also known as Autism Spectrum Disorder, or ASD, represents a broad group of disorders that vary widely, vary widely from mild to severe, and is characterized by difficulty with social interaction, communication, and severely limited interests. Whereas the CDC determined that approximately 1 in 54 children is diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. Boys are four times more likely to be diagnosed with autism than girls. Autism can be reliably diagnosed as early as age 2. And whereas, the lifelong nature of ASD and other developmental disabilities require a variety of types of assistance at different points in an individual's life. And whereas, our understanding of autism has grown tremendously since it was first diagnosed, as there is no known cure for autism. Early diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education and intervention are vital to the future growth and development of the individual. And whereas, a variety of public and private organizations and agencies strive to provide quality care, support, or services to children and adults with ASD to enable them to live as independently as possible and to reach their potential, full potential. And whereas, hope lies in a broad spectrum of treatments and an informed public and community committed to providing support and service to individuals diagnosed with autism spectrum disorders. And whereas, the Port Wainimi Police Department will wear customized autism police patches as an outward expression of our inner commitment to connect with our community, to create awareness and support those dealing with this lifelong neurological disorder. And whereas, we join the Autism Society of Ventura County in proclaiming April 2022 as Autism Awareness Month. So with that, I also like to let council know of a couple of events that we've had recently and a couple of upcoming autism events. Last week, we had two events, one at Anna Cappuccino and at Starbucks. And will be set up again at Starbucks this Thursday, where we'll have some autism awareness paraphernalia such as shirts, t-shirts, and patches, where all the money raised from these sales go to the Autism Society of Ventura County. And we'll also be at the Autu Run this coming Sunday, where I'm sure Sunny Like the Day team will be there as well. I'll be there, as well as our explorers, supporting autism awareness as well. And so I encourage all of you to attend one of our upcoming events, or even come by the autism run, which will be held at Cal State University at Channel Islands this Sunday, beginning at 8:00 a.m. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
I have my autism awareness tie on today, and I just want to thank you for supporting my nephew, Sunny Like the Day team. You've been a strong supporter. You run the race. I can't run, so I walk it. But it's a wonderful event. I think it's the greatest event that I've ever been to in Ventura County. The energy, the amount of people, the positive interaction with people like yourself and the teams. And so in recognition and of Sunny Like the Day, thank you so much, Chief, for your support. I really, really appreciate it greatly.
I just want to say something. I want to thank the police department for keeping that awareness alive within our community. I did a little research, and with all the breakthroughs that they've had over the years, it's amazing. There's a number of people that you might not even think are autistic. They're highly successful within the community and within the world. So what used to be a stigma that they would put them into the corners, no longer. They've been able to, I think, I guess it's considered a part of autism. Asperger, Asperger syndrome is a type of autism. And there's some amazing people in all fields that have done it succeeding well, based on the research and all the efforts and all the consciousness. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to a presentation by our Public Works Director, Mr. Villa Fano, on the Earth Day Proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Rawlins, City Council. Oh, good. Thank you, Curtis. The first Earth Day was enacted in 1970 to advocate for a cleaner environment as a reminder of the constant need for environmental stewardship and sustainability efforts. What is, next slide? What is Public Works doing now and what is coming up? Public Works will have a table at the beach for Earth Day on this Friday, April 22, at the base of the pier between 10 and 2, with information and brochures on water conservation, trash pickup, waste containers for recycling, and organic waste program. And the resolution for Earth Day is Earth Day Proclamation, April 22, 2022. Whereas, the first Earth Day was enacted in 1970 and engaged over 20 million Americans to advocate for a cleaner environment. And whereas, Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental stewardship and sustainability efforts. Whereas, it is understood that sustainability will only be achieved by meeting the needs of the present without compromising the needs of future generation. And whereas, humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges, among them, the need to manage an increased amount of waste. Whereas, people of this earth, from all walks of life, desire a healthy environment, and pollution has been associated with several health issues affecting the general population. And whereas, the city supports projects that demonstrate and encourages energy and water conservation, recycling of solid waste, sustainability, and the usage of renewable energy. And whereas, it is essential to involve the community in the design and implementation of solutions for pressing environmental issues and reducing pollution. Now and therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Port Wainimi hereby have the distinct honor of proclaiming April 22, 2022 as Earth Day throughout the city of Port Wainimi, and encourage all of its citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote the protection of our environment. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
While you were making your presentation, we have a proclamation that all of our city council has now officially assigned. So we're officially on board with you. And we obviously have a number of programs. Our council is very much aware of the need to have a clean environment. We have a number of programs. Mr. Councilman Gama.
Yes, September 17, 2022 will be the California Coastal Cleanup Day. That's an annual event that we participate in, starting from the Alaska 261 Memorial. And this Saturday, we have a beach cleanup. So anybody out there willing to come and help us out, we, we're going to be targeted, targeting the Ormond Lagoon area from the rain, recent rains that deposit a lot of trash. And we're looking for a few good men and women to help us out. So we'll meet at 8:00 a.m., starting at 8:30 a.m. at the Alaska 261 Memorial this Saturday, April 23.
At the last meeting, I announced that I would be organizing a cleanup effort inland from the beach and, and encourage our local HOAs to engage their residents to pick up the trash around their neighborhoods. And so I have, excuse me, posted that on nextdoor.com. I personally will be starting at Boca Park and working back to Los Palomas where I live. And I'm hoping to engage some of our residents. I've gotten some responses, but I just wanted to put this out to the public that, you know, we individually can take action to keep our streets clean and keep our waterways free of trash. So we don't need Earth Day to do it. Every day should be Earth Day. And, and we don't just need to focus on our beaches, we can focus in our, our own neighborhood as well. And then eventually, what I'd like to see maybe for next year is to us, for us to really take a, a position and make a policy decision on requesting those, those companies, those major corporations that produce plastics and non-recyclable waste to stop making that and to use more recyclable materials. And one of them, you know, Pepsi-Cola comes off the top of my head. But these companies, these large corporations like to blame trash on us. And they like the idea that we're doing cleanup efforts, you know, and picking up trash in our neighborhoods and off our beaches, when in fact, you know, it relieves them of the responsibility that they, that they have on their shoulders for actually producing the very materials that pollute our oceans and our beaches. So maybe next year, our city council can take a stronger position and lobby somehow or make requests to these corporations to stop manufacturing plastics and non-recyclable materials.
So we have some residents from.
Yeah, the cleanup for Saturday is going to start at 9:00 a.m. And we're going to start at Boca Park, and then people can work back to their, their neighborhoods.
So we hope our residents from Boca Park can get, get them out and rally for that. Yes.
Yeah, I've been pushing for a Styrofoam ban here in our city, and I know it's been postponed, but I know that's something that's scheduled for the future. Yeah, in the works, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, for your.
Yeah, and then I've also heard the state's looking into making a double, doubling the return policy for bottles and things like that as an encouragement for people to collect those bottles and cans and make a little money, and also improve the environment, which I think is kind of a good idea. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, being that I, Boker Park is in, within my area. I believe I need to recuse myself. And do we need to have this item pulled? Or what would you advise, Mr. City Attorney? And that, I want these, our residents to know from Boker Park, that's why I didn't attend your events, because there's a conflict of interest, because I'm, I live within the same area.
The conflict of interest rules under the Political Reform Act and the guidance from there essentially state, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, it's within 500 feet, there is a presumed conflict of interest. If it's within 1,000 feet, it's a rebuttable presumption and whatnot. So assuming you're within the target area.
I am.
Okay. So then, because this is a consent calendar agenda, what you would do is you would state that you have a reasonably foreseeable material financial conflict of interest based on residence. And then because it's consent calendar, you are not required to leave the dais or leave the room, but you will be not allowed to vote on that matter. So my recommendation would be to pull that matter, that specific agenda item, and vote on that separately with yourself abstaining for the reasons I stated.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just wanted to point out that we were provided with a map that identified the thousand-foot ring. And there's both per park, it's outside your. It's in your book.
The one I was given showed me within it, inside of it. Can I see that?
Sure.
I know we had, it's where the crow flies. And so like we've had some problems in the past as to whether we fit into those areas or not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. That's interesting.
Whose idea was that? Because that's a pretty good idea. Because we had that same problem.
I think Chris did this, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't know if that relieves your concern or not, but I just.
Thank you for that.
So are you able to vote or not?
Yeah, I guess I am.
So Greg, there are two distinctions. Are you outside of 1,000 feet?
I think that's 500 feet.
1,000.
Oh, is it, is it 1,000? Okay.
It appears.
Okay, if you are outside of 1,000 feet, there is a rebuttable presumption that there will not be a financial conflict of interest. That could be overcome if somebody could provide clear and convincing evidence to the contrary, that you would receive some sort of material financial benefit. That being said, it's also important to weigh the item in question. Is the addition of speed cushions likely to result in a material increase to your property values?
I don't think so.
And once again, the Political Reform Act applies personally, and you may not rely on my advice.
I would like to.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
All right, sorry to take everybody's time up with that. I was under the impression I was within that area.
Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to the consent agenda. Did you have?
I was going to say move to approve, but I think you have to read them out.
I have to read them all, so be prepared. First, I'm going to say all matters in the consent calendar are considered routine by the governing body and will be enacted in one motion in the form listed. There will be no discussion of these items unless before the governing body a motion to adopt, votes on a motion to adopt, specific items are removed from the consent agenda for separate motions. So I'm going to be reading to you the titles and the recommendations. Number four, approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting on April 4th, 2022. Recommendation is to approve the regular meeting minutes. Number five, receive and file the financial cash disbursements for March 30th, 2022 through April 11th, 2022. The recommendation is to receive and file the disbursements. Number six, professional services agreement with Milner Via Consulting LLC for temporary staffing services. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the professional service agreement with Milner Via Consulting LLC in the amount not to exceed $80,000. Number seven, professional services agreement with Water Resources Engineer Associates for water well facility design services. The recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the professional service agreement with the Water Resources Engineering Associates in the amount not to exceed $57,533 with the Water Resources Engineering Associates. Number eight, this is one we were just talking about here. Authorization of the sole source purchase of speed cushions for Bulker Park neighborhood. The recommendation is to approve and authorize the sole source purchase of speed cushions for Bulker Park neighborhood in the amount of $32,312.71 from Rubber Form Recycled Products LLC and the appropriation of $32,312.71 of Measure U funds for the 2021-22 purchases. Number nine, authorize the purchase pavement crack filling machine. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of a Super Shot 125D crack filling machine in the amount of $68,813.70 utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement through Source Well Contract Number 080521-CFC. And finally, number 10, authorization to purchase green waste containers. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of green waste containers from Toder LLC utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Omnia Partners Public Sector-Toder Contract Number 171717 and authorize the appropriation of $188,108.66 from the Solid Waste Reserve Fund for this purchase. Can we have a roll call vote?
May I ask a question, please?
Do you want, yes?
Can we ask a question of an item or do we have to pull it?
You do not necessarily have to pull an item to discuss it or have a question on it. It's just simply, if there is going to be discussion, it's easier to track it if those items are pulled, but there's nothing in the Brown Act that requires such an action.
Okay, I would just, I would like to make a comment that we continue to monitor the situation at Bulker. And are we doing other things? What's the plan? Are we just going to end with these speed cushions? Or are we going to continue to monitor the situation?
Not sure.
Again, good evening, Mayor Rawlins, City Council, Councilman Gama. Traffic continuation is a measured approach. We worked with our traffic engineer, we looked at the neighborhood, and it's a phased approach. We installed stop signs. We teamed with our police department and had added enforcement. And that was for a period of several months. And then we continued to monitor the situation. And then we decided that speed cushions was the next most effective way for speed continuation. And right now, that is basically the final move. You know, again, working with the police department and having additional enforcement. We've run the course, if you will, on this with additional stop sign, additional enforcement, and now speed cushions.
Excellent, so I think what I'm hearing is we're going to continue to monitor the situation. We're going to listen to the folks at Bulker and keep safety at the forefront of our discussions, right?
Very much so.
Thank you. I'd move approval for the consent calendar.
Second.
Maybe I have a roll call vote.
Before I do a roll call, I do have one written comment and also one person wishing to speak on item number eight of the consent calendar.
So why don't you read the written comment first?
I have written before thanking you for the recent stop signs in Bulker Park. I would also like to reiterate my support for the installation of speed bumps in the Bulker Park neighborhood. Please vote yes tonight for speed bumps in Bulker Park. Respectfully, Paul Giuffrida.
And we have one in-person comment tonight. And that is from Mr. David Scrivner on speed bumps.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to start off by saying I really appreciate you taking the time to look at this. We've complained about it for quite a while. This is a small city. You reacted positively. I hope you can vote for it, by the way. And it's nice to know that when the problem pops up, the citizens can come to you, tell you what our problems are, and you take it seriously. I don't live in Bulker area. My father lived there for quite some time. He passed away recently from COVID. And I've spent a lot of time taking care of him and now rehabbing the house there. So I'm there probably eight to 12 hours a day. It's on Bulker Drive, not Bulker Way. Cars come through there, most of the time, there's no traffic at all. You could play football in the street. Occasionally, cars come by. Most people are driving at a reasonable speed. Maybe 30% are going pretty fast. And then you have the idiots with the fast cars and that we all have to put up with. And they're going 50 down that street. So the speed bumps will make that impossible because they'll ruin their suspensions doing it. There's a bunch of really low cars in that area that look like they can hardly get over a driveway. Those cars are not going to be able to drive at a high speed through Bulker anymore. So we've asked for this for quite a while. You know, it takes obviously a step-by-step approach to get there. My discussions with Chief Salinas, it's not effective to try to put a police officer there to catch these people who on random basis are doing this. I mean, most of the time, again, it's quiet. A policeman would be wasting his time there. But then these people roar through, so I think this is a good solution. The downside for the rest of us is we're going to have to deal with speed bumps and probably knock our alignments out, which I'm quite happy to do as opposed to being run over by some idiot. So, thank you.
Being that it's on the consent agenda, you obviously know that there's no discussion here. We're all behind it, so can we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, so can we have the vote?
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
She tripped this.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Rawlins?
Yes.
Mixes it up to keep us on our toes.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the successor agency, which is a different meeting, even though it's part of the same one. I'm going to, at this time, I'm going, it's 7:52, and I'm going to call to order the successor agency for the Port Juaniemi Redevelopment Agency. And can we have a roll call?
Member Gama?
Yes, I'm here.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Member Perez?
Here.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Present.
Chair Rawlins?
Here.
All present.
Okay, we have a business item of the city council on the successor agency. Number 11, it's a joint resolution conveying APN from the city to the successor agency. And the presentation will be given by our city attorney, Mr. Smalling.
Thank you, Chair and Mayor Rawlins, since the council is sitting in dual capacities at the moment. This is kind of an anachronism. This resolution is going to be a joint resolution of the successor agency as well as the city council, and it's to correct a historic problem that's happened with a number of properties in the city. The first time the council and successor agency have encountered this problem was when we initially transferred Market Street from the successor agency to the city and discovered that there had been a prior joint resolution approved on March 11th, 2011 that conveyed approximately, I think it was eight to 10 properties, from the redevelopment agency prior to its dissolution to the city. Apparently, this was done so seeing the Dissolution Act on the wall that dissolved all redevelopment agencies in the state of California and was done as a way to somehow save properties from what was going to happen with redevelopment agency dissolution. In 2014, John Chang, the state controller, as a result of the dissolution laws, undertook an audit of all redevelopment agency activities for the year preceding the Dissolution Act. That included city of Port Juaniemi's redevelopment agency. And he determined that Joint Resolution 821 and 3980 was not authorized by law, and all of those property transfers were invalid. What this did was this clouded title on a number of properties that had recorded grant deeds in favor of the city, and it declared all of those transfers invalid. And so theoretically, the title that's recorded with the county on a number of these properties is wrong. And so in order to do anything with these properties, we have to fix what happened back in 2011. And this is one such property. The other ones will be handled in a more clean, one-fell-swoop type deal. But the reason for this is that we need to clear the record. And John Chang, the state controller, ordered that these properties be reconveyed back from the city to the new successor agency that was created as a result of the Dissolution Act. And so that is what we're here to do tonight with this agenda item. What this authorizes is the city would essentially quitclaim any property interest it might hold, because we've already said there aren't any, which is why it's not a grant deed. It would quitclaim to the successor agency in accordance with Health and Safety Code Section 34167.5, which was the direction that was given to us by the state controller. Once that deed is recorded, title is clear to this property. This property in question, you'll forgive me, I don't have the common name or what it's commonly referred to. But the reason for this is, is this is a property that's adjacent to the Habitat for Humanity property. And the next agenda item is Southern California Edison Needs an Easement Granted for Utilities. We can't grant an easement on the name of the city for a property the city doesn't rightfully own. So this clarification needs to occur. And the reason you're sitting in joint capacity is that the city is conveying by joint resolution title to the successor agency. And then you, sitting as successor agency members, are accepting title from the city. Then we can record it, and then we'll deal with the next step in resolution, in agenda item 12, which will be a successor agency-only agenda item. And if anybody has any questions. I'll make, I'll make the next ones less painful, I promise.
Okay, so I have, the recommendation is, and we're going to have two votes. We're going to have one by the city council and one by the successor agency. We're going to be voting twice on this issue. That the Board of the Successor Agency for the Port Juaniemi Redevelopment Agency and the City Council jointly approve a joint resolution of the successor agency for the Port Juaniemi Redevelopment Agency and the City Council of the City of Port Juaniemi, California, conveying real property currently owned by the city to, currently owned by the city to the successor agency to correct invalid land transfer in accordance with the Health and Safety Code Section 34167.5. So we'll do a roll call first for the successor agency.
We need a motion.
But we, but we're going to, somebody have a motion?
The recommended motion is, is from this, first it will be from the city, and it will, the city moves to convey title to the property to the successor agency. The second roll call vote will be that the successor agency accepts the conveyance.
Okay, all right. So make a motion to move on, move approval on the first conveyance to the successor agency from the city. Second.
First and the second, maybe we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Rawlins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Now we will have a second roll call vote for the successor agency.
A motion to accept.
Okay, so we're going to have a motion by?
I'm making a motion. Didn't sound right.
You make a motion?
Going to make a motion to accept the successor agency recommendation on conveyance. Going to make a motion to accept the successor agency recommendation on conveyance. No?
Sure. Let's call it a motion for the successor agency to accept the title from the city.
Okay. On behalf of the city council, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation from the successor agency.
Second.
If you have a backfield in motion? Oh, wait, just a second. Okay. So may we have a roll call vote?
Member Gama?
Can you reread? No, just kidding. Yes.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Wait. Hold on, sorry.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Chair Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So it is now eight o'clock, and we will recess to the city council meeting again. No? What we've been doing.
Wait.
We have an eye on the other.
Oh, I am right.
Yeah, we're recessing the city council meeting, and we're keeping the successor agency open.
Okay. So now we're moving on to number 12. It's a resolution granting an easement to the Southern California Edison for the electrical system operations. City Attorney Spalding.
So now that we've conveyed the property back to the proper entity, who can now grant an easement, we can now satisfy Southern California Edison's need for an easement to provide for operation, maintenance, and installation and whatnot of fiber optic equipment, electrical utilities, in order to serve the Habitat for Humanity property and development that's going on there. And so this is a necessary step to complete the build-out for Habitat for Humanity, as well as to maintain necessary infrastructure there. And as you can see, the successor agency to the Port Winnebago Redevelopment Agency hereby grants to Southern California Edison Company, and it basically does it that. But now we're at the right stage for the right entity to be conveying an easement. In the event that, or when we have to divest the successor agency of this property, it will be much simpler to maintain that easement in favor of SoCal Edison, because we will simply be able to reserve the easement in their favor from any future purchase or sale.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to say hello to Darcy Taylor, doing over there. And any additional comments you'd like to leave?
He doesn't want to get involved in this.
We're looking, it's looking good out there. I'm really, really happy to see the progress, and I just wanted to acknowledge you that you're here, and thank you for coming out with that.
So now we have a recommendation.
I'm going to make a motion.
Well, no, I have to tell you what the actual recommendation that you're going to be making a motion on.
Okay.
The recommendation is that the board of successor agency for the Port Winnebago Redevelopment Agency approve a resolution of the successor agency for the Port Winnebago Redevelopment Agency, California, granting an easement to the Southern California Edison for the maintenance and operation of the electrical supply system. So moved. So we have a second.
Yeah, a second.
A second. May we have a roll call vote?
Member Gama?
Yes.
Member Perez?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Chair Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So at this time, do we have any successor agency members' reports, comments, or requests for any future agenda items? Seeing none or hearing none?
Don't hear.
We will now adjourn the successor agency. The successor agency will adjourn to the next regular meeting at a date to be determined as needed. The time is now 8:03, and we will now reconvene the city council regular meeting.
Good job.
Right. I'm going to have to get some water after all of that talking. Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to number 13, business items for the city council. For the year 2021-22, the mid-year budget review to be given by Ms. Aricero, our interim finance director.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I will be providing you with the mid-year proposed adjustments that we are proposing for this fiscal year, and the information that I'll be presenting is based on the actual for through January, which is seven months, and then our estimate of where we think we're going to end up through the end of the year. And so with that, here's a summary of what I'll be going through. I will be going over the general fund, really focusing on general fund, projected revenue and expenditures. I'll go through the adjustments that we're proposing to revenue, and then also new appropriations on the expenditure side. I will talk about the updated CIP for this fiscal year, and we'll take a look at the fund balance, our estimated fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, and then just take a look at what we've accomplished thus far, and then what we have for the next couple months that we're working on. And so with that, this next slide really summarizes the adopted budget for '21-'22. And if you take a look at the first column, the revenues that we had, I think I have a pointer, but the first column, the revenues that were adopted were the $23.8 million. And then we had expenditures of $23 point, roughly $23.4. So that was personnel of $16 million and non, or other operating expenses of $7.3. So we were looking at the end of the fiscal year when we adopted the budget to end up at a net surplus of $475,000. And that was the, that includes all of the approvals, budget adjustment approvals that the council has approved. So we had some revisions in October that we brought before council, October 4th. So that's all incorporated into that number. Then if you take a look at the middle section, the proposed adjustments, so that's what we're proposing now, revenues looks like are coming in higher than what we originally estimated for the year. So we're looking at an additional three point, almost 3.5 million in revenues. And so that would bring us to an estimated revenue in general fund of $27.3. And then if you take a look at the expenses, personnel, again, with $16 million, we're looking at about a $500,000 in salary savings, just from the on-field positions that we've had throughout the year. So we're looking at ending the year at about $15.5. And then the other expenditures from $7.3, we have new appropriations that I'll go through in more detail of $636,000. And so we would end up at seven, roughly $7.9 million in other expenditures. And when you look at the bottom line, our net surplus would go from $475 to $3.8. And that's what we're estimating for this fiscal year, based on these adjustments. So this next slide gives a little bit more details on the revenue adjustments, and I'll go through the items where the larger adjustments are. One of them is the sales taxes, and that includes, so we're looking at adjusting taxes by $1.1 million, and that includes Measure U and Measure W. And those additional revenues are really coming from a better, or recovery from pandemic, better than expected, online sales, which contributes to the pool of taxes that we receive, strong sales in quick-service restaurants and casual dining, and general consumer goods. So those are the three buckets that are providing the additional sales. We have some other adjustments in license and permits. That's just based on actuals, adjusting it up based on where we're trending now. The other one that I wanted to point out was that negative adjustment that you see of $182,000. And the bulk of that is we're adjusting interest earned for general fund based on life. We have investments with Ventura County and life, the Ventura County pool and life. And when we prepare the budget for this fiscal year, the interest that was used was not correct. So we're correcting that. So the interest that we had in the calculation was overstated. So I'm bringing that down by $137,000. And then another $33,000 is a reduction from the rental at the community center. So we don't think we're going to get the amount of revenue that we expected. And then the other large adjustment is in the miscellaneous revenue, and really that's the sale of the city property. That was $2.2 million, and that was not in the budget. That was not reflected in the budget. And then we're seeing cannabis revenue coming in stronger than what we projected.
Is there a column for all the cannabis revenue? I've been looking for it last night.
On the cannabis revenue is, I think it's in the Schedule A attachment. But you know what? It's included, it's in the miscellaneous. I don't recall off the top of my head. I think it's separate cannabis in the Schedule A.
So I saw tradecraft in there and a number, and I was wondering if, because I know that usually they just group them all together.
It would be grouped. Yeah, it would be grouped.
So do we have?
I think it's in the Schedule A. And in the increase, the adjustment, it would be $250,000 is what we're thinking. It's coming in stronger, so we're adjusting it up by $250,000. But it shouldn't, it should be combined. It should just be cannabis, not specific businesses.
On page 13, there's, it says cannabis, tradecraft, ventures. So anyways, I just thought that we wanted to group them all together.
It's not a new rule. Make sure that we update council. It's a cannabis.
Do you have any comments? I just wanted to make a couple. I was kind of pessimistic regarding like some of the projections that the cannabis companies, when they first came in, they had some pretty high projections, and it appears that they've actually met those projections and then some. So I mean, that's kind of very positive. My other comment, I guess, and it's kind of, and everybody knows it's a little bit a continuing nag on me, is that we have personnel, we, there's a half a million dollars worth that we haven't spent, that we're kind of, and my concern, not from your standpoint, but my concern from the city in general is that we don't, in fact, get those people hired on for these various different positions that the city council approved last year.
Thank you, Mayor. That is a good comment. I think that number of 500,000 is clouded a little bit because some of the services are being covered by consultants, and so it's not an exact vacancy on field position math. And so we do have coverage, although we have to contract for that, those particular services.
So have we, like, does it show on one of these figures that, in fact, our contract budget has increased dramatically? Being that instead of like staff personnel, we have an increased contract budget?
We do, and part of the reason that we're not, you're not seeing a large increase in contracts is because there were other line items that the departments were able to offset. So if they had any, as an example, if they had additional, say, $30,000 in contract services, they may have had other line items in, within the same O and M that they are expecting to come in lower than. So they're just doing a transfer, and that's why we don't see a big impact in contract services.
And I'm just trying to do the quick math here. If you knock out the sale of the property, which was kind of an unexpected thing, basically how much money are we in surplus after that? I think it's 2.2 million, so I'm not sure what the net effect of that would be.
Right, right, right. So it would be like 1, 2. Really, it's the 1, 1. If the driver is really the, the sales taxes, the 1, 1 is, and then a little bit of the cannabis revenue.
Okay. All right. Do we have some other?
Well, I just was wondering if she was done with your, with the presentation. I do have questions, but I wanted to wait to...
Okay, I have a couple more slides.
Okay, very good.
And then the next slide is the new appropriations that were cities requesting. So I just wanted to provide a list. I think some of them are self-explanatory, but I can go through them. So replacing the police mobile data computers and docking stations, $111,000. The Faro-style handheld scanner, we're asking for $22,000, additional 22. The budget had $55,000 approved. We're looking at a total of $77,000. The Open Gov software, $146,500, that is, includes five modules, and one of them is for finance, for business licenses. So we're looking at bringing business licenses back in-house. And three are community development permitting, code compliance, and planning. So that's going to replace HTE. And it's really a user-friendly portal for customers to be able to use it and pay online and facilitate the online permitting process. And then the last one is for public works. So those are the five modules. On this one, we may or may not use the funds this fiscal year. They're included in my, in my presentation here, but I think as we're getting closer to the end of the year, if we don't need, I use them this year, we'll be rolling them over to next year's budget. $80,000 for contracting out the trimming and tree assessments. And then some of the other ones are a little bit smaller, COVID testing reimbursements for staff. We're reconfiguring the front desk to be ergonomical, so that's $16,000. Supplies for new staff, $10,000. The Volker Park playground equipment, that's an additional $10,000. We had $25,000 in the original budget. We're looking at it costing $35,000. And then the $227,500, those are costs that were originally in CIP, and we determined in going through the CIP projects that they're not really capital improvement projects, they're really operating in nature, so we're bringing them into the operating budget. So I have to show them in as an addition, but it was a deduction in CIP. And then $9,000 for body cams and equipment for parking and code enforcement. This one, again, we may or may not need it, but we already had it in here. So if anything that we don't obviously spend, we're going to carry it over to next fiscal year. And so we're looking at $636,000 in new appropriations, and that's been offset by the half a million dollars in expected salary savings. So we're looking at a net of impact of $136,000. And so the next slide really just summarizes the earlier slide that I had with the adopted budget in blue, you know, the revenues at $23.8 million, and then the revised at 27. And then on the expenditure side, we had $23.8, $23,383, and we're looking at $33,519, so just slightly higher. And they're really focusing on the net projected activity, which is the net surplus again. We were gonna, our original budget stated we were going to end up at $475,000 in surplus, and we're now looking roughly at $3.8 million. And then on the next slide, I just wanted to go over the CIP. Talked a little bit about having to reclassify some of the projects into the operating budget. And so here's the original CIP for the total for citywide. We had $9.3 million that we carried over that we had in the fiscal year '21 budget, and those projects did not get completed. So we rolled them over to this year. And out of those 9.3 million, 2,341,908, or general fund projects. And then on the revised side over to the right, we've gone through and I looked at all the projects and identified which ones are going to be completed this year, and that number is the 5.9. So that is the dollar amount that the city is expecting to spend on projects this year. And 2.1 is general fund dollars. So there's a reduction in general fund roughly of $220,000, and overall citywide, 3.5. So the projects that are not going to be completed are going to be going, be included in the five-year CIP plan. And so looking at specifically general fund, we had $2.3 million in the original budget. general fund, we had 2.3 million in the original budget. We're transferring 202 into the operating because those are not, they were not capital improvement projects. They're operating in nature. We have requests for 565,000, new requests. And then 583 are going to be included in the five-year CIP. So we're transferring, we don't need, we're not asking for funding for those, we're transferring those out. And so the revised CIP for this year is 2.1 million. And so what does that do to the, the fund balance? And so when I presented the mid-year review in February, I showed this slide, exactly this slide that showed the beginning fund balance with 17 million. And then we had our revenue and expenditures and the 15 million of reserves per fiscal policy. And that left at the 3.1 million that was the fund balance per the adopted budget. And so where we are today is roughly, and this slide is kind of hard to read, but we're roughly at $8 million is what we're looking at as an ending fund balance. And I'm going to go through the next slide, because this next slide I think will be easier, it's got the numbers. And so here's how we got from where we were before to where we are now. And I just want to state that these are still unaudited. Our audit is, is almost completed for 2021. But if we go through the first, the adopted budget numbers, the beginning fund balance, which was unaudited, was 17.9 million. And in that number, that included or netted out the rollover capital improvement plan funding. So that was net of the CIP. And then we had financing sources of the 23.8, uses of 23.3. And then we have the reserves of 15.3. And so that left us the unreserved fund balance of 3.1. And then the revised numbers that I just went through are, the beginning fund balance is 21.6. The financing sources are expected to be 27.3. Our uses are 23.5. And then the reserves remain the same. And so we were, the unreserved fund balance would be 10 million. And then we subtract the estimated amount for the CIP of the 2.1. And that's how we get to 8 million. And so you can see the variances on the side. And I just really want to focus on the beginning fund balance, that difference of 3.6. There's a couple of things going on there. The first one is, as I mentioned, the beginning fund balance in, when we adopted the budget, that was netting out the CIP. So it was already deducting the CIP. Also included in that was the 2020 fund balance was still unaudited. We didn't have the audit financials yet. There was an adjustment increasing the fund balance by half a million. So the fund balance improved by half a million. So it rolled, it's rolling over to the 21.6. So those are the biggest differences there. And so again, we're looking at an estimated fund balance of a million. We should have audited financials very, fairly soon, in the next couple of weeks. And so we would know if there's any changes to the fund balance. And then those will be presented when I present the year-end numbers. And so my last slide, just going over what we've been working on with the 2022 strategic plan. I mentioned the five-year strategic capital improvement plan, so that will be presented with scenarios for consideration. And that will include some of the projects that are not longer going to be completed this fiscal year. And I'm moving to future years. Quarterly budget to actual reports, we're going to continue to do that and provide quarterly updates to council. Request for proposal for the new ERP accounting system is out. We released the RFP in late March. And the RFP is due April 29th. So we should be getting hopefully some good proposals from a couple, a couple vendors on that. And the contract with Open Gov is what I spoke about with the business licenses, permits and compliance, planning and work orders. Gov Invest, we are in the middle of working with them on three different components, pension, labor costing and forecasting modeling. And so we'll be providing some more updates on that. The California State Water Board, we received 285,000 and applied those dollars, those to customer accounts for water bill. And now we have an opportunity, we had an opportunity, we have applied for the wastewater area just program. And the amount that we were eligible to apply for is 127,000. So hopefully you'll hear back from them, we'll get funding and we'll be able to apply those funds to customer accounts for, for wastewater, past due amounts. The ARPA payments, we paid the employee premium pays. And we've also paid the grocery and pharmacy associates, everyone except for one of them is pending, but we paid 110,000. And so we have one CBS pending some information, we'll be paying that out this week, actually. And then I mentioned the audit, it's near completion, so we should be presenting that to council soon. I put here May, June, but it should be presented very soon. And with that, that's my last slide and I'll take any questions.
Okay. Some questions?
Thank you, Ms. Sincero, for your presentation and your hard work on this. It's a lot of information to process and, and I'm sure to work with. The question I, I had was just a real simple one, I noticed in here the rents from the Little League. Is that what we, we collect from the Little League, is that $3,000? Is that what was being referred to earlier in the public comments? Where the bees?
We do collect rents.
From, from Little League, okay, and that's the amount that we collect on an annual basis approximately?
It's a, it's an annual amount that's contracted for exclusive use of those fields.
Okay. Thank you.
Coach Obama?
Yeah, I always like to look at the big-ticket items and I'm still having problems looking at the revenue side. So can you direct, like, what did we budget for total cannabis revenue? I, I can't find it here.
It's usually wrapped up in something else.
All right, and then on the same lines of, when it comes to the Oxtard Harbor District, I know we have three revenue sharing agreements. And a few months ago, I, I thought we were up over 2 million dollars for the year. In other words, I thought we're outperforming what we budgeted. And so again, I'm looking for that detail as well. I'm like, I can't seem to find it and I kind of think.
The, the only difference with the Oxtard Harbor District is the payments are, are booked. So it doesn't necessarily reflect the exact amount that the revenue sharing agreements will, will add to the revenue numbers.
Right, but again, I was, I saw something that took us over 2 million dollars. And what I see here is that we're 1.7, so I'm wondering why there's, in other words, the port is doing, exceeding what they budgeted.
Yeah, we, the, so the bud, when we did the budget, we get the, the projections from the port. So that, those are the numbers that are reflected in the budget now, we didn't adjust those numbers.
But we're outperforming. Like, aren't we supposed to?
Yeah.
Let me try another way. So on page, let's see, what page, sorry. Page eight. It shows the three line items for the Harbor District revenues. And then it shows the adopted budget for 2122. And then the revised budget is the same, but again, I recall seeing a number that was over 2 million dollars and these are at 17, or 1.7, so I'm wondering.
That Schedule A that you're?
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I thought that when we do mid-year budget review, that let's say we budgeted a million and revenues are 1.5, so then we would book additional revenue, right? And then the opposite would be true if, if we budgeted, well, like, let's just focus on gas. Let's, let's say if we had a gasoline line item, because of the recent increases in the price of gasoline, we would probably see a budget adjustment because it's, was costing us more than it did before, am I?
Right.
Stating that correctly, yeah?
And we, yeah, so we have the, for the gasoline, we have that in the fleet fund.
In fleet.
Did adjust that. In Schedule D, Schedule D has adjustments. And that's where the fleet, the fleet fund has an increase. And that's mostly due to increases in gas.
What you're, what you're asking is the Oxtard Harbor District estimates that we had in the original budget had 1.7 and it's still the same. So we return back to our, the Oxtard Harbor District for updated projections. The payments are booked throughout the year. And so we use whatever estimate they provide until we close the year out, since payments are still outstanding.
And these are actuals only through January of this year, so.
Right.
That doesn't include, it does include the entire year.
And maybe I dreamed what I'm thinking because I thought we were, we were, that the Harbor District was their business.
The Harbor District has publicly announced that their, their gross revenues exceeded to a high degree their expectations this year and definitely last year too.
So then.
So, so we haven't necessarily seen their estimate that they provide us shift that much, but they have publicly stated that. So we have an expectation that'll be higher than what we had budgeted for.
So we did, but we didn't, we didn't revise it.
We did not receive updated.
So, so we're, we're engaging in very conservative budgeting because basically what you're saying then, we're going to do better than what we stated we're doing right now because we know that we're going to have increases from the Harbor District, but we didn't do a revision.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, so when it comes to cannabis revenue, you said that we're outperforming our budget. And again, I was trying to find the page in here that shows the budget and then shows how much we're outperforming. And I, I can't find it.
It's on the second page of the Schedule A. So we had cannabis at 2,450,000 and we're revising it to 2.7.
Where on page, on the second page are you?
What page?
Your, your, your page looks different than mine. Oh, I see it, okay, I see it now, okay.
Miscellaneous? Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous revenues cannabis, okay.
I just want to make a general comment. I'm sorry for the people in the audience that we have you later on the agenda here. This seems to have been taking a lot longer. If I had known this was going to take this long, I would have asked, requested that this, these items be earlier on the agenda. So my apologies. Any other questions? So what, what happened, just real quick, there'll be an 8 million dollar fund balance left after all of this, right? What happens with that money?
That is the estimated fund balance.
Yeah.
If all of the projections.
So does that go in the reserves or what does that do?
It's, right, it sits there, it's the, right, it's, it's an unassigned. So that's part of what we're going to be looking at when we look at the pension modeling, the forecasting tool. So we're going to take all that into consideration.
So we won't be spending that this year?
Not be, no, not this year.
Yeah.
We found that projections.
And so then, I know like earlier, like, there was a big conversation as to what the ideal reserves are. We're going to be way, way high, am I correct?
Yeah, the, the unassigned reserve is the 8 million that is in excess of our 15.3 million reserve, which is a, a number derived from a variety of different best practices in terms of catastrophic impacts to, to, to budget.
So, I mean, I had heard terms that like the ideal city should be like a 15 or 20%. This looks like it could be quite a bit higher.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I think in the previous budget was somewhere around 12 or 13 million.
Yeah.
But there was no real basis for, for that number. So there was some analysis and rigor that went into creating the reserve for this last budget. All of those things are, you know, you know, negotiable, the things that you can shift or change. But it was, it was built on, on understanding the ability to fund a variety of different things with catastrophic revenue impacts or catastrophic events that challenge our ability to generate revenue. So that's how the, the reserve of 15.3 was, was created.
Okay, so, yes, I'm sorry.
Going back to Councilmember Gama's comments on the cannabis money? That's just up until January, so, and that's already a surplus, so we, that means we can even still get even more surplus, right? So.
No, the 2 point, the 2.7 is the estimate through, through the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're at one, we were at 1.4 through January. So it would be for the entire year.
Okay.
Do you, I mean, again, depending on.
I see it, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna, there's, you need to make a vote. There's a recommendation is to, and by the way, thank you for answering all our questions and being, being able to find all our answers that quickly. I mean, commendation to you on that. There's a recommendation to approve the 2021, 2022 mid-year budget review, report and budget adjustments, which includes recognition of an additional 3.5 million dollars in revenue and an appropriation, an appropriation of 136,000 to the city's general fund operating expense budget. May I have a motion?
Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Well, we're looking pretty good financially. Number 14, the resolution declaring a level two water supply shortage pursuant to ordinance 698. Mr. Villofano?
Good evening, Mayor Rollins, City Council. Good, thank you, Curtis. A little background, on March 28, 2022, Governor Newsom issued executive order N 7-22 in response to the historic drought conditions we are currently facing. Steps to increase water conservation include emergency regulations requiring water providers to implement a minimum of level two water shortage plan. Water level, water level, water two, or level two water supply shortage. What are the restrictions of a level two? Watering of landscaping with an irrigation system is limited to two days per week. And those days will be Wednesday and Saturday. And this is during the dry season, April through October. And one day per week during the rainy season, November through March. The filling of ponds is limited to maintain previously established aquatic life. Washing of cars is limited to hose and bucket. And refilling of pools and spas is limited to one foot. Level two, let's pass one there. What is the city doing? We're adjusting our irrigation schedules to match those in the ordinance in this resolution, as well as watering at night. We're going to be doing education and outreach. We're preparing handouts and flyers and educational material to assist the citizens in reducing their watering. their water usage. As I mentioned earlier, for Earth Day, we'll be passing out information on water conservation this Friday with our booth at the base of the pier. We're preparing a, a mailer to go out with our utility bills, uh, one page, one side in English, one page, one side in Spanish. And, um, this will take effect, if adopted, on the tenth day after the date of level two declared. And, um, uh, Mr. City Attorney, do I need to read the resolution?
You mean, read the resolution verbatim?
Correct.
No.
Okay. Um, and it's our, it's my recommendation that the City Council adopt the resolution in keeping with the executive order that Governor Newsom issued on March twenty eighth. Are there any questions?
Yes, um, thank you. I'm, um, wondering about the mediums. Are they currently being watered, the road mediums, like Ventura Road?
We've converted some of those to drip irrigations, but all the, in the next ten days, they're all going to be scaled back. We're only going to water on Wednesdays and Saturdays, and it's only for fifteen minutes each night, and those are being adjusted by our landscaping division.
But.
Where there's drip irrigation, that is precluded, but they still can only water fifteen minutes.
I noticed there's a very large eucalyptus tree pretty much right over here, and it's uprooted a pipe, a, a irrigation pipe, and it's disconnected. And oftentimes, sometimes we walk the dog real late, and, um, we'll see sprinklers come on, and we'll see water flying all over the place. So, um, my question is, how are you going to stay on top of broken sprinklers when the idea is to save water? And then, oh, every time I drive by that tree, I, that pipe just sticks out. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but it's right here. And I'm just wondering is, are we, what are we doing? Are we going to, are, are the trees going to survive? Um, you know, they're eucalyptus trees. I understand that they use a lot of water. They need a lot of water. So I'm just concerned that, um, the mediums are going to continue to not look so nice.
Unfortunately, yes, you're going to see, um, more brown throughout the city, because we have to comply with, uh, the governor's executive order. And, uh, all the other jurisdictions, Oxford has gone to a level two, uh, the Beach District has gone to a level two. We've got our landscape staff out. I started them out today, actually last week, looking for broken sprinklers and told them this was coming down the line. And in the next ten days, uh, I directed that they make sure that all our sprinklers comply with the resolution that I'm asking to be adopted tonight, which is watering only on Wednesdays and Saturday nights. Where there's drip irrigation, that can continue, and, uh, unfortunately, that's where we are right now.
Right, but what, how do we deal with wasting water? Because I, I, down at the beach, I know there's one area, and I've sent some Go-Goves in where you, you come down there early in the morning, and there's just like a massive puddle on the concrete and in the, in the parking lot, and it's, you know, it, it's a waste. I mean.
I've directed our staff, last week, I directed our staff to turn the irrigation off from the, uh, the beach restaurant to, uh, the flags at Market. So there's going to be no irrigation there. You've got succulents, you've got, um.
Palm trees.
Well, we're just not getting, we're just, we're just going to shut those down, because there's also a number of broken sprinklers. When I walked the walkway, and, uh, right now, we're going to be shutting that down. And there's the ice plant that was, was planted, it's a succulent, it can survive, you may get some browning of that. Unfortunately, that's the reality of, of where we are with our water situation now with the drought continuing on.
I, I know there's a number of systems out there right now that are computerized, that can sense where water is needed and where it's not. Is there any, um, look forward to maybe purchasing these types of systems? I know we're always limited in staff, we're always, you know, very hard to find top irrigation people, and, and I, you know, Rainbird, there's a number of companies that provide like these sensor system, so if there is a leak, they know about it before we do, and they alert you on the computer.
Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Cable and Charles Cable, our principal engineer, uh, he handles the landscape division. I know he's looked into it, but, and some of the, uh, some of our irrigation system is on remote. Here at City, City Hall it is, uh, but not everywhere yet. It's going to have to be manually, uh, changed so that we comply with the resolution. That's something to look for in the future. Hopefully, you know, as, you know, we get, we get rain, uh, in the future along with additional conservation and recycling programs, you know, those are the things that are really going to long-term solve our water shortage. Reclamation projects, those are all long-term projects that, uh, in conjunction with water conservation now, will eventually make the difference, and hopefully, we can go back to, uh, a more robust watering, but, um, that's certainly a, a well-monitored watering system with electronic monitoring. But for now, we are shutting things down. If you, if you know where a leak is, please send it in to me and Charles Cable, and we'll get it addressed as soon as possible. But we are shutting down a lot of irrigation at the beach, because it's really not needed right there. We want to minimize that.
Okay. And I know from your reports on the Water Association, regardless of the drought, like in the next twenty years, we're going to have to cut back by twenty percent statewide, so that just adds.
Right. The, uh, the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency has, has, uh, a ramp down, where all the local agencies will have to ramp down the water that's allocated from the groundwater base and look for, uh, additional water sources in addition to conservation. I, I mentioned before, where the city of Camarillo has been at the forefront right now. They did a reclamation project where they're reclaiming brackish water, and they've created approximately forty-five hundred acre feet of new water for the city of, uh, Camarillo, which, which is great for the city of Camarillo. And it's a regional problem, where all the agencies have to work together to solve it, whether it's recycling the wastewater from Oxford to the El Rio settling grounds, uh, to, uh, to what the Navy is doing at Magoo, where they're doing a, a brackish water reclamation program. Those are all the programs that will add up, that will eventually help solve our problem.
Okay, so do we have any other comments?
No, just thank you for your work.
Thank you, yeah. Depressing, but thank you.
No, it's so important, you know, that we continue those, um, drought, um, measures, water-saving measures, especially our personal use of water. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one, one other thing I think that we should start considering is making that move to drought-tolerant trees, and we heard earlier tonight, and I noticed it, too, there's like, I think the city mandated to a shopping center to plant eight or ten more eucalyptus trees, because they took out other trees that were causing problems, and it's like, maybe we should have a pause and try to move to a drought-tolerant tree palette, so that we're listening and not planting trees that are water-heavy users. Um, I think there are trees, like we have the coastal oak out front in memory of Alice Green and, uh, Douglas Breeze, that is, um, drought-tolerant. And, um, so, um, you know, we, we have to make bold moves, both in our selection of tree palette, and so, I know that's not your area, but, um, I think that's something that the council, we need to start thinking about.
No, I agree, and, uh, I know Charles Cable has brought that up. Uh, community development takes the lead on our citywide plant palette, and also, that plant palette governs what HOA's plant or replant, and it also governs what the city plants. So I know Mr. Stewart had been looking at that with Mr. Cable, and hopefully, uh, it is something that community development takes the lead on, so hopefully, that will come back to the council.
And then one other thing I noticed is, uh, save water on the side of the trash truck, and I noticed we have a couple new trash trucks that have an empty banner board, so maybe we should get more.
They'll be getting those, and, as I said, some of the outreach, we will be putting, uh, message boards out, the mailer will be going out, we're going to be contacting all the HOAs, uh, so we're going to be very proactive. You can also, uh, the last slide, if we go to that, you'll see, uh, I think you can see that on your screens, uh, much better than you can see, uh, up on, on the large screen, but if you, you can, um, the general public, and the public will be getting this flyer. This flyer, this is the English side of the flyer, but we will have a Spanish version, which will be going out. We're shooting, uh, for, uh, no later than the June utility billing to send these out, but they can apply for water-efficient device rebates at bewaterwise.com, and that's administered to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. We get part of our water from Cuyagus Municipal Water District, which in turn gets water from Metropolitan Water District. That's why Port Wayneemi citizens can get, go to Be Water Wise and look for rebates for water-saving devices. And this is what's going to be going out in a mailer, it's going to be posted on social media, and we're going to do, uh, a very robust, uh, public outreach going to the HOAs. I'm going to be, uh, attending HOA meetings and, uh, urging water conservation and, uh, answering questions.
Very good. That's great.
Okay, so we have a recommendation to adopt a resolution declaring level two supply shortage pursuant to ordinance number six nine eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now, we will move to number fifteen. The Heroes History Heritage Nomination for Jonathan Sharkey Memorial Walkway. Presentation will be given by our deputy city manager, Mr. Perez.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, Charles Perez, deputy city manager. Agenda item number fifteen pertains to city council's consideration of an application pursuant to the Heroes History and Heritage Policy. Uh, this application is to honor Jonathan Sharkey, former mayor and councilmember for the city. Okay, so by way of review, in December of two thousand twenty, the council, uh, adopted the Heroes History and Heritage Policy, so that the city would have a uniform way of evaluating requests to honor individuals that have made significant contributions to our community. During two thousand twenty-one, we received, uh, three nominations pursuant to the policy. Such nominations were reviewed by staff, supported by the Citizen Advisory Commission, and acted upon by the city council. One of these was an application to honor Mr. Sharkey with a memorial walkway, uh, along the beach. In place of the, uh, uh, oh, I'm sorry, in place of the proposed walkway, uh, the council action, uh, was to approve a memorial tree with dedication plaque in honor of Mr. Sharkey. Last month, uh, the city received a subsequent application, uh, pursuant to the policy to honor Mr. Sharkey. That application, uh, and the company's submittals provide significant detail about John's contributions to the community, uh, about who he was as an individual, and include fifty-three letters of support for the application. Last Monday, uh, April eleventh, the Citizen Advisory Commission reviewed the application and submittals, made a recommendation that council support the application. So, uh, the applicant seeks to name a portion of the beach walkway between the pier and the North Plaza, uh, the Jonathan Sharkey Memorial Walkway. The proposal is slightly different than the last application that was received. This proposal includes two double-sided aluminum signs, approximately twenty-four by six inches in size. Uh, the prior proposal included two bronze plaques along with a bar relief plaque, uh, in the center area of the proposed walkway. Uh, the prior application also included a private donation, uh, from Reach, which has been withdrawn as part of this donation. Private funds were independently raised from the applicant. So once again, uh, the information in the application materials that were provided as part of the agenda includes extensive information about Mr. Sharkey's record, his character, and his accomplishments. Although there are many, the three that are cited as the most significant are securing the city's financial well-being, his advocacy for shoreline protection, uh, and his efforts to maintain the city's participation in the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. As previously mentioned, private funding has been secured for the purchase and the installation, uh, of the, uh, signs. And the applicant is seeking a waiver of the parking fees, uh, for the ceremony, as well as, uh, for the city to assume ongoing maintenance for the installation. So the recommendation is to approve the application designating a portion of the beach walkway, uh, to honor a former mayor and councilmember Jonathan Sharkey, to authorize the expenditure of up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for ongoing maintenance, and to waive any parking fees associated with a dedication ceremony. That concludes the staff presentation. I'd be available to try to answer questions that you have. The applicant is also here and may speak to questions.
Can, can we, um, we have, I, how many public comments on this? We have one public comment on this, um, and that is by Mr. Scribner.
As you recall, um, there's an attempt to name the pier after Mr. Sharkey several years, two years ago, that led to, um, a lot of problems. Essentially, the public rebelled, made a big deal in the star, and it was pulled back. Um, there's a, a lot of community opposition to this. Skip ahead, skip ahead, a few months ago, uh, there was another attempt to name the walkway after him, okay, which was pulled at that point, uh, and a, uh, plan to put a tree at the city council, uh, that's, uh, out front here, we proposed, which seemed reasonable. At this point, um, we'll back at it again, okay, and it's kind of in the dead of the night, and nobody really saw this coming, much like the whole pier thing in the first place, and it's going to create a lot of anchor. Um, most of the people I've talked to, I didn't get a chance to talk to anybody this time, because I just found out today that it was not on the agenda, but if we go back to the last, um, proposal to do this, people were again outraged and angry about it. Everybody I talked to was like, why are they doing this again? Um, so this is going to create a lot of public dissension, um, and I would like to also remind you that this, I think, led to one of the former councilpeople no longer being a council, council person. Thank you. Lastly, if this is something that you would like to do, I suspect it would be a good idea if you put it on the agenda, uh, for the election and have the city vote on it in, in general, have this population do it. Actually, I think you're going to do with naming of the city, uh, to, to, by any regions that are part of it. The citizens should speak on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, would you folks like to make any kind of address?
I'm, I'm here to answer questions if you have questions.
Okay, great. So at this point, um, council, do we have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment, um, I don't feel naming the beach walkway after anybody is the proper way to recognize somebody's service here in the city hall. I mean, Jonathan Sharkey attended probably four hundred and, I don't know, twenty, thirty, forty meetings right here at this dais. And I think the city hall is a wonderful place to recognize his service. And I think that's what I would like to see. And somebody floated an idea like, you know, we haven't had it because of COVID unfortunately. But having this area out in front named the Sharkey Plaza. And I thought that was a really good idea because this is where his service was. And I think the beaches is kind of, should be off limits for political stuff. So I will not vote to name the walkway after Mr. Sharkey for those reasons and those reasons only. I think city hall is where his service was. And I think we honored a prior mayor, Green out front, our first African American, Green. Douglas Breeze out front with the tree. And I would wholeheartedly support John Sharkey here at city hall. So it's nothing personal. It's just what I believe in. So that's it.
I guess I'll go next. I voted in favor of recognizing John Sharkey in in the way that was proposed by dedicating a portion of the walkway, not the entire walkway, but a portion of the walkway. Which has been identified in this report because of his, not only his years of service, which are quite remarkable. But the way he served at this city. And I think he is above and beyond in his service to, as city council member. And I would, I think it was a mistake to not vote him. I think there has been plenty of notice on this, on this agenda in terms of allowing the public to be alerted that this is going to be heard tonight. People who follow city business know to look at the agendas of our city council on the third days before the meeting. And I think our CIC meetings are also posted, are they not? The community.
Yes, advisory commission meeting is posted and published too.
That was also, John was a remarkable man. He's, he's done some remarkable things, including the sand erosion program, helping us with that years back. So I intend to vote in favor of this. Sorry, I'm having a difficult type of talking. I'm just very tired.
The community advisory council already approved this today or yesterday?
They approved it last week.
Last week, okay.
Let me put it another way. They recommended.
Recommended. They made a recommendation. Any other comments?
Yes, so I have all respect for anyone who does this duty. But we are public servants and it's our duty to protect our beach and it's our duty to make sure that we try to do the best for our city. And although I have a lot of respect for Mr. Sharkey and Beverly, I also would like to stay away from naming that the beach area after council members. I would like to see more to our heritage with Chumash. And I know the Chumash community also wants to be recognized. I know he had a love for the beach and I know he did a lot of work, good work to it, and I appreciate that. But so did other council members. Every council member or every session of council has someone dedicated to trying to save our beach. And that will always be because that's important to our community. It's, it's just something that we do as a beach community. I would also agree with naming the plaza after Mr. Sharkey where we hold our tree ceremony. And any other community event there would be a great way. Mr. Mayor Rollins had a suggestion. He wanted to create a memorial wall, recognizing all the mayors and their time and service. And I think that's a great idea as well. But I agree as well as keeping away from the beach area, naming it after council members. I'm a, I'm a public servant, so it's, it's, this is something I volunteer to do. And don't seek recognition for things. This is something that's my duty to give back to the community. I am here to serve the community. That's it.
Okay, I'm going to make a few comments. Last time I voted against it and the reason why I voted against it was, one of the key reasons was that, I think it was five thousand dollars was being requested from the Reach Foundation to help, you know, to basically pay for it. And my concern at that point in time was that that was not the reason why Reach was developed. It was, as the word spells, recreation, education, arts, culture in Huaynimi. And I, and not only did I didn't think we had the money to do that, but I also didn't think we had, that wasn't the best use of the funds. Being in this office for just a little over three years, while it is a volunteer office, I know each one of us will know that we part our hearts into it. And you spend many, many hours trying to do what you feel is best for the city. And for someone who did this for over twenty years, I mean, that's just to me phenomenal. Since I moved here about fifteen years ago, I saw the state of the city. I, you know, you got to remember back, way back when we're hearing about all these optimistic numbers about the millions of dollars that were going to be in the positive. And I remember coming into a situation where they were really considering whether the city would be able to be viable and continue on. And I think there was a lot of, you know, frankly, there was a lot of dissension. I sat there and the crowd listened to the dissension between the council, and I think a lot of that has changed. And I think a lot of it was through the perseverance of people who kind of stuck through it. To make sure the main message of what we want to see in our city continued on. So those are my only comments at this point in time. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to just add, you know, that, you know, I heard Mr. Scribner's comments about a lot of people out there. And, you know, I always question, you know, the innuendo and supposition that, that people make when they say, oh, I've talked to my friends. And they say that, you know, they won't, they don't want this or we're going to have problems because a lot of people are telling me. You know, there's, to me, there's no real science in that. There's no real statistics in, in that at all that could support a statement like that. But what we do have is over, I don't know, fifty letters here from some very prominent members of our Ventura County government. And beyond that, including Kelso, Kelso Lutheran, which speak volumes about this man. And I don't know what the issue is about staying away from the beach. You know, we, we've got the Pruder Library. We have the Orbin Carpenter Center. We are only four point two square miles. So where do you determine where the beach starts and, and it stops? You know, this, this man has done remarkable things. His wife sits here and she continues to do things for our city. They've done newspapers. They've done his work at the Historical Society. I don't think you'll find anybody else in the history of our Port Huaynimi who's done as much as this man. Some of you who are new here may not even realize the contributions that he's made. And I don't think it's an issue of cost. I think there are some personal issues involved in the decision here. I think we need to do the right thing and, and vote yes on this.
So I'm just going to say this as best as I could say it. I was the target of some very mean tweets of John Sharkey.
Here we go. It's personal.
Well, no, it's not. And I've forgiven, and, you know, I was accused of not graduating from Kelso Lutheran. And, you know, that got to the paper. And so I just feel that honor the man's service here at city hall has nothing personal. It has to do with, here at city hall is where the service was provided. We've honored former mayor Green and former mayor Breeze out front.
Who can't even compare to Mr., to John Sharkey in, in, in the time served. And Donna is here to attest to that.
Yeah, I think we should recognize that service here. I won't.
I, again, I'm just going to reiterate, I sat through those things and like most any other people, it's hard to get people to run for an elected position whatsoever anyway. I know I was on the other end as a city employee, as an elected official, you're dealing with a lot of intangibles that, you know, you don't deal with as a city employee. And for someone to be able to stick through that, I, I just admire that person for being able to do that type of a thing for that long. And moving the city forward. So unless there's any more further conversation, we need to make a motion. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the recommended application. Also recommended by our Citizen Advisory Commission. And if we're going to use them the way we intended to and give them the credit that they deserve. They recommended him the first time and they're recommending him again. So I think it's kind of a shame to not go along with that. So thank you, Bobby.
Second, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I don't like the inference that I have anything personal. I don't.
No, I wasn't referring to you.
I, I have absolutely nothing personal negative to say about Mr. Sharkey whatsoever. I just, it's a personal opinion and it would be the same for anybody who is asking to be named is has nothing to do with anything else. I just.
And.
You know, we're supposed to be making decisions here based on merit, not on our personal opinions. We're supposed to be doing what's good for the greater community and not based on our, our, our personal opinions here. So that's, that's just really what I'm.
My personal opinion is that any council member that serves should be recognized here in the city hall. That doesn't make me a bad person.
Well, there's no precedent for that.
Well, okay, anyway, I, I think everybody has their own personal reasons why they're going to make a vote one way or the other. And they don't necess, you know, this is kind of a, it's kind of an emotional, anytime you move forward on something like that, it's, it's an emotional thing. It's, you know, I mean, we can talk of objective as possible, but basically it's kind of a little bit of an emotional thing as to how you feel that person has helped or hurt the community. So we have a motion by Councilman Hernandez and a second by Mayor Protem Martinez. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
All due respect to John Sharkey's service to the city. I really appreciate his service to the city, but I am voting no.
Councilmember Perez?
No.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passed, passes three, two.
Okay, now we have a second Heroes History and Heritage nomination. But by the way, someone had made some comment. I think city manager Connors, there is actually going to be a plaque in city hall recognizing all past mayors.
It physically exists and it's, I think it's already displayed up here.
The mayor's wall?
Yeah, the mayor's wall.
Okay, very good. Okay, so the second, the Pedro Valdez Bicycle Repair Station.
Great. Good evening once again. Item, agenda item number sixteen pertains to a second application pursuant to the Heroes History and Heritage Policy. This one to honor Pedro Valdez. So as noted during the last item in December of two thousand twenty, city council adopted the Heroes History and Heritage Policy. So the city would have a uniform way of evaluating requests to honor individuals that have made significant contributions to the community. April two thousand twenty-one, Pedro Valdez was killed when a vehicle deliberately crashed into a group of bicyclists. Last month, the city received an application seeking to honor Mr. Valdez. And last Monday, April eleventh, the Citizen Advisory Commission reviewed the application and recommended that council support the proposal to honor Pedro Valdez. Pedro was a sixteen year old resident of Oxnard. He was an integral part of the Oxnard Fixie Crew. He was a leader of that group. That is a fixed gear cycling group that was focused on expanding biking in our community. Mr. Valdez is remembered as a caring and selfless young man who loved cycling. The purchase and installation of the bicycle repair station was an existing project with city funding. And the proposal is for the city to pay for the costs associated with the purchase installation of a plaque. And similar to last application to waive any fees that would be associated with parking for a dedication ceremony. So application seeks to get council's approval for right to name the bicycle repair station down at the beach in honor of Pedro Valdez. To authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred dollars for the plaque and one hundred dollars annually for maintenance of the plaque. And once again, to waive any fees that would be associated with parking on the day of the dedication ceremony. That concludes the staff presentation.
Do you have any, Councilman Gama?
Yes, my heart goes out to Pedro and his family. I was mayor at the time and I met his family and grieved with them. And it's just a horrible situation and I fully support this, this naming of the bike station after him. So I will be voting yes, but I just, is there a ceremony tomorrow scheduled?
There is.
And I just wanted to bring attention to the optics or kind of like, you know, the thing is just coming to council tonight. And there's a ceremony planned tomorrow. So I, it just.
And maybe I can address that. Although the decision for this recognition bike repair stand is tonight. The probability existed for organizers to plan and create a ceremony on the anniversary of his death. And they were ready to cancel should council or the citizen advisory commission not recommend or support or not approve. So just from a planning perspective, organizers had to communicate and organize in order to potentially do this on his anniversary of his death date.
I also wanted to say that this idea of the bicycle repair station has been socialized through the city council for a while now. And the idea was always to honor him on the nineteenth. So it's not like this was all of a sudden. The families, you know, really desire to do something tomorrow night. We knew it was going to be close. I know there was a push to try to get the CAC meeting together and I appreciate staff for doing that. And I understand the concerns and the optics, but, you know, should council decide against it, then, then we'll, we'll cancel it and the family will, will have to do something else. But I think under the circumstances, you know, I think it's really important to honor this anniversary in his memory. If, if we don't do it, it'll be done in some other way. So I just would ask council's consideration in recognizing that we have a chance to be, to be the leaders in helping them mourn Pedro's death. And it's also an opportunity for us to build relationships with this bicycle group that you yourself is, you had problems with in terms of that.
No, not problems, not problems, interaction.
So, so I think it's, it's, the efforts tomorrow are to set an example for other bicyclists, especially youth. And, and how to use their spare time in constructive ways and in productive ways. how to use their spare time in constructive ways and in productive ways. And I'm hoping that in the future, this, this will be something that we will pay off in the long run as we build relationships with our community and with the youth and, and people who visit our beaches.
Move to approve? Recommendation?
Second? May we have, I, I just want to make a comment. And, and that is, I think the fact that we're recognizing this tragedy in a, in a way that epitomizes what that person really enjoyed throughout life, you know, biking. I think that is, of all the different kinds of memorials and stuff that, you know, in the past, I've been kind of a little uptight about putting statues and stuff like that. This is a functional thing that people use over and over again, and I think that will even better recognize Mr. Valdez because of that. So...
And you know, the, the beach has been looked at by other, you know, by the Bard Memorial too, has a way to memorialize people. So, this idea of keeping things off the beach just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make logical sense to me when, when we're already planning to use the promenade as a memorial walkway. So, you know, this is just one way, and it's, I think it's a good thing because it, it's a way to attract visitors. They come here and they learn about what's happened in Port Huinimi. They learn about our leadership. They learn about people who helped made the, make the community the way it is. And, and why not do it through memorializing the people who, who were were here before us, whose shoulders we stand on today?
So, I just want to say that this is a respect and we're respecting the life of Pedro. It was a life cut way too short and his family grieves and, you know, I want to see the respect from the Oxnard Fixie Crew come back to us and, and, you know, I, I worry when I see these large groups of kids with no helmets on. And, you know, I know that this was a terrible, terrible intentional act and it just drives us all nuts that it happened here in our city or it happened anywhere. And so, and I can't be there tomorrow and I'm really sad. I'm gonna be at the port teaching the port logistics class, but I, I do want to, because I do have a little bit of a relationship with these kids and I, I know they're good kids and I, I don't want the message to be like, respect the beach, respect your, you know, the privilege to ride your bikes and be safe and look out for each other. And, and I think this does all that. And so, my only other ask, Mr. City Manager, is can you put a backstop behind that thing so sand doesn't get in there and crunch up the equipment? Can you please do that tomorrow?
Yes, that's already underway, but thank you.
Okay, good, thank you, because that drives me nuts to see that sand blowing and clog up that bicycle pump.
Oh, is that what's happening?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. May we have a roll call vote?
And to confirm, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Martinez and a second by Councilmember Perez.
Yep.
Mayor Protem Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Motion passes five, nothing.
Okay, we'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable City Council. I've got a couple items. I'm gonna focus on some of the public comments that have become popular over the last couple council meetings, so I'll start with a couple of those. The first is snack bar update. We contracted with a firm, Lotterbach, who's also doing a design and engineering for our play equipment on the beach, dog park with attached community garden and potentially some other projects that are, that are pending in our, in our CIP planning. We identified through Lotterbach, and I say he was contracted because there's some rumors out there that he was doing it pro bono and it wouldn't receive the highest priority. So, we intentionally contracted with him so that would not be the perception. He identified and walked, as Ms. Bolo had already alluded to, the, the property and the facility and identified nine separate deficiencies and build a draft design that he's gonna take to County Public Health and Environment when he receives a concurrence that that is gonna be sufficient to receive a permit. And then that will become the final draft and then we'll start the renovation. We already identified funds and a, and, and from our, our existing CIP that only funded the, the roof for a couple of those buildings, but we can convert that pretty easily and fund the renovation. The timelines, the, the approval will come pretty quick and that'll be a high priority once the approval from Public Health is rendered on the design for the renovation of that building. So, that's the snack bar.
Yes, will, will this be contracted out as far as the renovation or will this be done by staff?
We'll, we'll have to take a look at it. It looks like most of the work can be done internally from, from, from a staff perspective. The addition of six sinks, the purchase of a industrial freezer and industrial refrigerator, the addition of a window and the infill of an existing window and a couple of odd odds in it, including a dry storage that'll be served with a container. So, I think all of those are within the, the capability of staff, so we could probably accelerate that project if we don't have to contract that out. So, that's what we're gonna look at when...
Is there a project lead?
If there's a project lead, well, it would be facilities with a PW support, public works support, and, and probably the, the, the typical actual project lead will be the facility supervisor, Peter O'Callaghan. So, that's the snack bar. The second thing was the play equipment on the beach. We have done a series of outreach events, including this past weekend with the Egg Stravaganza, and we received only positive comments and no negative inputs. And so, the project, the theme, the concept of all been endorsed by the public through, through almost two and a half months of outreach, including a display at the library and a couple of other events. Likewise with the dog park too. So, from that, Mr., or the Lotterbach firm will now take that, that design and convert that into a final. And Lotterbach is also doing the procurement for that project. So, they'll define the scope and then they'll compete that project and award the contract on our behalf. The dog park at Bubbling Springs is being looked at from a two different site perspective. And so, we were finishing up the analysis with our original consultant, MIG, who did the park master plan and, and prepared that plan for grant approval, which included some environmental work where the location of that dog park was site-specific. And so, we want to just make sure that we don't have to incur additional costs if the options exist in order to relocate that and different from what the park master plan envisioned.
Are there, are there two, so I'm picking up there's two options as far as locations right now?
Yeah, there's, one of the, the, the original park master plan had the park, or the dog park in the middle of Bubbling Springs between the north and south segments as a dog legged back towards, from the community center, dog legged back towards the ball fields. Another proposal was to put it adjacent to the community center. And, and so, we wanted to make sure, we took a look at that and see if there's any reasons why it couldn't be done or what the impacts were if we, if we deviated from what the park master plan had in it.
Mr. Connors, doesn't the second option mean no multi-use field and having to pull out a bunch of trees possibly?
There's, there's a variety of different challenges by the, the second option or the community center option. One of them is tree removal. The, the section where the dog park was intended to be is, is thick with trees as compared to the, the plots associated with a U-six soccer field and a U-eight soccer field. There are some other challenges with regard to the, the quality of that particular segment of property in terms of what needs to be remedied in order to get to a field satisfactory environment for a, a soccer field if we move the fields there. And then there's the challenge of a sequoia finding that looked at the entire complex and the renovations associated with park master plan that stipulated that those things are gonna be there and it made pretty an environmental trip that we would have to either redo or have a, a new finding for. So, there, those are the challenges.
You're talking about the mid, middle area of Bubbling Springs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, then if we approved the first part and it was, you know, pretty easily put in without any major issues, why are we considering the second one? If it seems like it's gonna be more problematic?
It was a recommendation that we just wanted to entertain and do some analysis.
Yeah, but, you know, frustration level is high here. I mean, we had a group of people out there with a plastic fence that were happy as could be with their little makeshift dog park. And I think two years ago, we all agreed, I, I think the entire council, let's put a dog park. And that seems like the perfect spot.
We didn't agree on that spot, though.
Okay, so we're hearing about all these other problems with the other spot. So, it just seems like, you know, can we get it done? And then we also, we're talking a minimalist dog park.
We'll, we'll air it out later, right? We are getting dangerously close to discussion and action. So...
Okay.
Appropriately, we can ask questions on this regard.
I always say you can ask clarifying questions as if this is like a presentation item, but these specific subjects have not been agendized. And if there were people who wanted to come out and speak about the dog park, they were not given prior notice, then it would be discussed.
But we won't be making any decisions tonight. We're just asking clarifying questions.
But we can, we can start crossing the lines about why weren't other options done and that can start sounding an awful lot like direction and discussion and that runs afoul of it.
Geographically, I'm kind of messed up on this. Like, I, I, I recognize, and I've been out to the one where they used to have the fence, the open area already. What you're telling me or what you're saying is that that's being considered as part of the park master plan to be a U-six soccer field because it's open or requires little, few trees. The other location more to the middle of the park has lots of trees, so it would be encompassing the trees, the dog park kind of?
Yeah, the, the tree density in the middle of the park or the, where the dog park was, was a program to be located in the park's master planning process was fit within there because it, it's, it's square footage was configured to be put in there. If you move it towards the community center and displace the, the, the U-six and the U-eight fields, you're gonna have to remove a lot of trees in order to put them in the same plot.
I know dogs like trees.
That's right, you do.
Little sign of, okay.
Anyway.
And I'm, yeah, these are just, I'm just sharing with you that, you know, the, the review and analysis so that it's, it's, so the public's aware for the most part.
No more questions?
We officially hired our, our parks, I'm sorry, our recreation coordinator today, Taylor Penny. We're excited to have that new employee start, which gives us...
Taylor Penny, the one that worked for St. John's? Oh.
So, that gives us an expanded opportunity to start to, to really branch out and service offers and events and a variety of different other things. So, that's pretty big and good news. I want to talk about our twenty-two, our 2022 focus areas. And one of those focus teams that is identified and associated with a, a good portion of our council-approved 2022 prioritized, prioritized focus areas in public safety. It's sort of a wide thing, but what they focus on is traffic safety, traffic engineering, you know, crime, nuisance crime, and then the surveillance associated with all of those things. And so, that team investigates, identifies, analyzes, and, and, and programs in data harvesting in order to identify problematic intersections, neighborhoods, roadways, those type of things, and then creates mitigation strategies around that. The bulk of park speed cushions are part of that programming. And in the, you know, the, the draft capital improvement five-year plan, there are speed cushioning multi-year programs associated to relieving or mitigating those traffic areas. And so, I wanted to highlight and showcase one of the teams that are focusing on these things and the work they're doing, including surveillance care, cameras, surveillance systems in areas where we're, we're discovering or nuisance type of crimes is migrating towards.
They can come up with good reasons to, good ideas to reduce the issues in bulk area?
Anyway.
In the bulk of the area?
Well, exactly. So, that, that kind of falls in, and so, it's, it's across the city. We, we bring in a subject matter actually like traffic engineers, surveillance experts, those type of things in order to supplement the existing staff. And so, you're gonna start to see tasks and mitigation strategies and, and budget items to support the, the findings and the, the plan of actions that this team is developing. And with that, I conclude my report for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comprehensive report. Okay, so at this point in time, we're gonna move on to City Council members' reports and comments, starting with Councilman Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Um, so, we have a lot of conversation regarding trees and tree pallet and the status of our parks and, you know, I mentioned earlier with this water thing. My hope is that we could put a pause on, I, I just, it just kind of makes us not look very well-intended when we know we have new rules coming in regarding drought and trees and then we're telling organization in our community to plant eight eucalyptus trees when we know we're gonna be looking at our tree pallet for drought-resistant trees. So, maybe we could just take a pause and try to, I'm hoping that we could come up with a timeframe to start working this reconfiguration of the landscape design plan, because we, we see all this drought stuff coming in, water conservation, and, you know, we're, we're working against ourselves. So, and then I would also hope that, and I saw that in the budget revision tonight, about eighty thousand dollars for trees. We have a number of trees that are halfway removed and, and it's getting, we have a dead tree in a park I see. I mean, I just see a number of, of tree issues out there. So, then, of course, we have the Bubbling Springs water issue with the stagnant water and all that. And I know that we're, we're moving to get, working on that. And so, I just wanted to, to bring attention to the fact that, you know, there's a lot of things that we're doing that won't lay in well with our drought and water conservation plan. So, I hope that we could do something about that. I'm really pleased with moving into our sand summit with Beacon. I think tonight was a really good presentation and looking forward to this next dredge cycle. And I'm also looking forward to trying to have a way to, to address that scar that Mayor Protem Martinez mentioned tonight. And I think the city would be safer if we could have our lifeguard stations up closer to the water. Just makes a lot of sense to me from a risk management standpoint. And I want to give a little statement. Hopefully, Mr. Mayor Rollins, that you could read tomorrow. I won't be able to be there at the Pedro thing and I really hope this could bring our community together. And, and congratulations, Beverly, on having your John Sharkey walkway. And I'm sure it's gonna, it's gonna be, yes, yes, I'm sure. And, and that's it.
Councilwoman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Rollins. Committee meetings attended since our last council meeting include the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, RDP twenty-one strategic planning. They're, they always have a legislative analyst from DC who reports on how funding is... who reports on how funding is being funneled to the base. And we they they always talk about the money that's being devoted to sand erosion mitigation. So they continue to keep on top of that particular topic. Also attended the SCAG regional meeting partially. I had a little vacation with family, so I couldn't attend the whole thing. And then I attended the homeless continuum board meeting. And they have announced the count from the homeless count this year. As you know, because of COVID, they could not do the count for a couple of years. And so there are new numbers now released. Those new numbers are available. I don't have them for you tonight. But I have downloaded the application and I I I'm going to personally complete the application and get that to you, Mr. City Manager. So hopefully, we can get that through council for approval and become a member of the county's continuum of care program. Tomorrow is the anniversary of the nineteen ninety five Oklahoma City bombing. That was a long time ago. Some of you may have not recalled it. I actually left that day of the bombing and headed to Oklahoma City and worked in the state EOC for for about three days and got out to the site. And and it was an incredible, just eye-opening event, a lot of lessons learned from that. But that was back in nineteen ninety five, and that was what you call a lone wolf terrorist attack. So, you know, that's it's something that we always have to keep on our radar, especially after nine eleven. You know, these things continue to repeat themselves through history. The other thing I wanted to say is not a not too pleasant thing to to share tonight, but I was very blindsided by the turnout from the Little League group two weeks ago. And what concerns me about that is the information that they are getting or aren't getting about what we're doing at Bubbling Springs Park and with our Parks Master Plan. And has city council members, you know, for any of us who have ties to these organizations, I think it's incumbent of us upon us to to make sure that we're giving them the correct information because it seems to me that there was some misinformation being shared. And I just hope that, you know, some of the the people are voicing their opinions on nextdoor.com and on social media. And and my response is to direct them to where they can get the good information. Because that shouldn't have not hap- that shouldn't have happened. That shouldn't have happened. And the other thing I want to say is that flooding this council room with people to promote certain philosophy or idea by any one of us is inappropriate, if not a violation of our city council policy. So it's not something we should be doing. And I, you know, I I just want to encourage everybody to please look at our city council policy and procedures because too many times I'm seeing things that are close to violation. And please know that there are sanctions that if you violate the city council's policies, there are sanctions that the city council can implement. They can take your committee away from you. They can prevent you from going to, we can prevent you from going to on travel. There's a number of things. It's and it's not helpful to the function of the city council.
What evidence do you have to make these kind of allegations?
I'm not making any allegations. I'm just advising city council to pay attention to the policies and procedures. Because it's so, when we don't do that, we create low morale among city staff. We delay the completion of projects. We create extra work. And it's it's just, I just want to remind this council because I I think sometimes we we overlook that we do have rules to follow and they apply to all of us. So with that, I'd also like to ask to adjourn in honor of Frances T. Lowe. Frances T. Lowe, she was eighty-five. She passed away March twenty-fourth, and she was born in Richmond, Virginia, but she was raised here in a large family in Port Wineemi since the nineteen sixties. And she worked for the Oxnard School District for nearly forty years. She retired as the head cook of Blackstock School. She also ran the snack shack at the CBC baseball field on the Navy Base for many years in the seventies while her sons played baseball. So if it, I would appreciate if we would adjourn in her honor. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, okay. Maybe I'll still think about this.
You can put a clip in, Jim.
Thank you.
So I did attend a few committees as well, but nothing to report because oftentimes I find that many of the committees I attend have subject matter that does not necessarily apply to our city. It's rather frustrating. But nobody seems to have any assistance to help or ideas because they're more tailored to other areas that we really can't relate to. And I do agree with Councilmember Hernandez about the misinformation and making sure that we give community members that are connected to the facts about everything that's happening. I know there's ARPA funds that's going to be dedicated to Bubbling Springs. And we have CIP projects that are going to be that we could allocate to Bubbling Springs. And a lot of things that are happening, we just can't do them overnight, but they are happening. And a lot of stuff's happening in other parks, and I think we need to focus some attention and give some love to Volker Park as well.
Yeah, I also agree that I think Volker Park needs a little bit more attention. Our reach meeting was moved to this Wednesday because we didn't have a quorum. We didn't have enough members. And some ideas from some of the public that they brought up to me. Maybe we might want to have some lifesavers at the pier. I guess somebody fell over the pier and.
There are lights there.
No, they need to be completely replaced. There's a lot of light bulbs out, but they're old.
I know they don't provide a lot of light. I actually went out there and visited, and there were lights.
No, I actually meant.
Lifesavers.
Lifesavers.
Lifesavers?
Light life.
Lifesavers, like.
Those are right. But I mean, I meant life, like, you know, the the.
Lifesavers.
Yeah.
Rings. Oh, oh, lifesavers. Oh, okay.
Like the little white wheels.
I like that.
Yeah, I guess something like the the round ones where you toss them, you know.
Oh.
A couple of people have mentioned frisbee golf. I actually played it this past weekend for Easter. That was pretty fun. And all and I and we also hosted the basketball skills challenge and three-point contest yesterday, Sunday. And just reminding everybody that it's every third Sunday of the month. I'm basically the lead volunteer. It's one of my five goals that I wanted to do here as city council is providing more opportunities for our youth in our community to have fun in our parks. And so the next one's on May fifteenth. So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring up beach cleanup again. We were looking for volunteers for this Saturday. We have a big effort out there. And anyone willing to able to come out, we'd love to have you. And just wanted to say that all our parks need attention. Weeds are growing, and and so if we could step up our efforts to get that class and comp study, figure out how we could attract qualified people to maintain our parks, I think we will all be less frustrated.
Okay. One of the committees that I attended was the Ventura County Air Pollution Control Board. And one of the interesting things that they're doing that the public may not be aware is they have a rule now where the ships will slow down to a to a to a lower level. And you say, well, what does that mean? Well, by them slowing down, it actually reduces the emissions that come out, you know. And many of you, with all the increased efforts with FedEx and stuff coming in, when they reduce the speed, it actually reduces the emissions quite a bit. So that's a good thing. The other thing is not only does it reduce emissions, but if those if if the boats are going very, very quick, they kill whales. Because the boat, because the whales don't have a chance to react to it. By slowing it down, the whales have a chance to get away, which is kind of a nice thing.
Kinda.
That's an interesting point. Yeah, the other thing is they the 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 executive director of it, Dr. Tassopoulos, has now moved on. And so we're in the process of hiring a new executive director. So I'm on the committee to hire the new Air Pollution Control Board Executive Director. Just to comment on the trees, I think this could be kind of a quick fix that staff perhaps can move forward towards developing a a tree palette that's water-efficient so that we can move fairly actively. I I don't, I want to see trees being replaced. And I feel that it doesn't take a lot of effort to kind of develop a a quick policy where we now move it to drought-tolerant trees as replacements.
Well, I would argue, and I hate to discuss this, but we have to establish a policy.
No, that's what I mean.
Yeah, but I but I'm not, I I like eucalyptus trees, okay? Because they're they provide shelter for monarchs. So to to say that we're all going to support drought tolerant trees, we can't say that yet. We haven't discussed it.
Okay, then that 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 will be that will be something for a future agenda. I'll talk about that later on. Okay? I love the monarch.
Don't assume things.
No, I'm not assuming. I I'm sorry, we're having, yes.
I also want to mention with the skills challenges, I I plan on hosting one at the beach, volleyball and soccer on May first. And I just noticed that we're not going to have another city council meeting after on May second. So just want to let you guys know, soccer and volleyball. I'm going to try to do two sports in one day.
One final, and you all know, you all know Jacob, who comes by and is a proponent of water efficient.
Who's that? I have never. I'm just kidding.
Well, let me explain to you who Jacob is. But nonetheless, I am.
I talked to Jacob.
I am working with Jacob right now, and it's apropos to like what we discussed today. We're going to be, he's going to be getting a group of volunteers, and we're going to be developing a exhibition of water-efficient plants at City Hall with some signage so that people can come to City Hall with the new rules that we're going to have to cut back on water anyway. This is how you can make your local home pretty. And so he's been putting a lot of effort into designing water-efficient plants and that people can come by and there'll be a sign. So that's a a positive thing.
I love that.
So anyway, that's all I have to speak on that.
I have a comment. I just want to also congratulate Beverly on her walk. I'm sure when you're out there every day, you see John's name on the plaque. It'll bring you great memories. So I am happy to.
Okay. Okay, so now we will move on to requests for future agenda items. Which that one will be one.
Which what?
The tree thing.
The tree thing.
Okay, yes, Councilman Gama.
So last meeting, we five oh vote, we asked for the classic comp study brief to come up on tonight's meeting. That was in the motion that I made on top of Councilmember Perez's motion that we tweaked a little bit. Anyways, so I think we really need to get that brief going. As we know, we talked about the condition of our parks, class and comp. What are we doing to attract and retain good employees so we could get the job done? So we already approved it, so just making the point that I thought it was coming today, but didn't. And I would like to suggest that we get on the agenda our mechanism to start this landscape plan design started. Looking for a second. Get on the agenda how we're going to start the landscape redesign process in the city. Yeah. So the 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 plan was written in nineteen ninety-three. It's twenty.
Yeah, he's referring to the landscape design plan. Nineteen ninety-three. Although I wasn't here for the presentation, I thought Mr. Stewart went through the process, and that is lined up. I I don't think it's going to be ready.
Well.
For a near-term council meeting.
All right, so now we're having a discussion, so.
So I I I'm just clarifying what the what the agenda item is.
How about an update?
Well, how about give the council a chance to give our view on where we'd like to see it go as opposed to Tony going blind? I mean.
It's not nice.
And again, I he gave a presentation on the process and that we're undertaking, so I'm not sure what the ask is.
Well, drought 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 tolerant trees.
Which is which is the 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 genesis behind doing the review is drought tolerant indigenous tree and plant palette. So he is going through that process. And he briefed council on the process that needs to be undertaken and the partners and stakeholders involved.
Okay.
Including hiring a consultant to.
Okay, great. So coral trees, again, I'm trying to understand, is the count, are we, is coral tree going to be removed? Or we're going to just let?
On the on the on the agenda item.
Point of order.
Yes.
Timing, direction. According to the city council policy and procedures manual, requests should avoid a proposed timeframe unless absolutely necessary. The city manager shall have discretion in determining an appropriate time to schedule requested agenda items after considering priorities, personnel resources, and budgetary considerations.
So you could delay it as long as you want.
I don't think he'll do that, but.
Well, it's it's underway. But there's a significant number of process steps that go into that, so it's not going to be immediate. So I I can I can I can agendize something, I can agendize an update or a review of the process, but I I I don't know exactly what you'd want me to agendize.
I'd like to.
We we've.
I I'm sorry, can you, can I, I know I'm, can I agend- request an agendize as just regular updates on where we are on that process?
Okay, yeah.
So.
Okay, just regular updates because it's a long process. But I think council feels comfortable, at least that there's forward motion so that that, you know, whatever that forward motion may be.
But the frustration is that, I know, I don't mean to upset you about eucalyptus trees, but, you know, we're mandating people plant certain trees that may not be a part of our palette in a year or six months. That's what I'm kind of bringing up. It's like, can we get the two synchronized so that, you know, we're not? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I I believe it was already answered. It's that's in process.
Oh, it's in process?
Yeah, that's that's already being undertaken. So the 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 ask is, the clarification was, what is it, does, what is it that council wants?
Right, but I'm bringing up a situation that just happened.
And I'll second Mayor Rollins's request for an update.
Mr. City Manager?
The city didn't plant the trees, and I do need to confirm what the, this was at a development, a plaza.
Mary's Market.
So I I I don't know what the authorization process was with those trees. So I have I have to confirm, and I'll report back. But I I'm not necessarily confident that that we were involved.
Little son of a, we probably should be involved though. Okay, so, okay, so any other requests for future agenda items?
No, I'm 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 failing on my request.
I have a, I would like to have a staff report, an update on the Family Justice Center annex and the potential need for our investment or involvement in that. I know that's something still, I don't even know if they bought the building yet, but I know there's a future plan for us to be involved, so I'd have staff update.
I will second that. May we have a vote?
We had a presentation from Chief Salinas on that.
Yeah, we we haven't been told like how much in order for our people to be able to use it, we're going to have to invest a certain amount of funds.
It appears we have funds. Do we have a second?
Yeah, we're in person now, so you can say all in favor, say aye. We don't need to poll.
Aye.
Okay, okay.
I just, because I think this is an important point, there is no financial requirement for our residents to use either the the original and the singular one or a a new satellite one. So there's no funding tied to tied to usage or patronage from our residents. There was a two hundred fifty thousand recommendation from ARPA funds to go to the Family Justice Center. So it really comes down to how how much we want to. So it really comes down to, um, to how, how much we want to necessarily contribute to it. So that's what we'll focus on.
Well, services. So there can be, uh, the agenda item and the second, that will be part of the report, what we recommend.
Okay.
Okay. And you, you don't have to.
Well, I did want to make a motion on, on possibly adding, you know, frisbee golf, uh, and other sport-related equipment on our parks and, and beach. So maybe, uh, I don't know, we can have a, a discussion, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm open. I, I don't really, I, I'm not trying to just say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna add, you know, so.
Could I make a recommendation that we have an update on youth programming that's being done? Like, there's a lot of things like the, the, uh, skateboard, golf, teen center, and some little packets that we could, so, because that's been a big priority that we just know where we're moving forward.
And then maybe we can discuss that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I like that.
Okay.
Second that.
Everybody?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, the only reason we were doing roll call votes for, for non-public hearing items was because of Zoom, you couldn't tell what anybody else.
Oh, boy. I need to go back much faster now. Now you tell us.
Okay.
I, it skipped my mind in two years.
So without any future requests for agenda items, it is now ten o'clock, and this meeting is now adjourned. In memory of.
Petra.
Petra Valdez and.
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Low. Uh, Frances Low.
Okay, so this meeting is, and.
Thank you.
Memorize them.
Thank you.
Okay.